To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Starnes, can we have a roll call, please?
District one, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castiel.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
All right. Have you all had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions or modifications that you wish? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So moved. All right. Y'all have had... Oh, everybody vote my way of saying aye?
Aye.
As you all can tell, I'm new at this job, so...
You're doing fine.
Thank you. Um, have you all had a chance to look at and approve the minutes from the last meeting? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Now it's come time for citizen expression. I believe we have one person that's signed up to go first. Uh, but after she has spoken, um, you all can just be orderly about it and come one at a time. Please state where you're from and the county. Let, uh, sorry, let me just read this off. Citizen expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, uh, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county, and what organi- and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns speaking and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Thank you. Ms. Powers.
Good morning, Board. I'm Bobby Couch-Powers. I'm from Dougannon. I was raised in Coburn. That's why some of y'all don't know me. Code of Virginia two point two thirty-seven hundred states the affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy. Since at all times the public is to be the beneficiary of any action taken at any level of government. It also states the provisions of this chapter shall be liberally construed to promote and increase awareness by all persons of governmental activities and afford every opportunity to citizens to witness the operations of government. I start my day like everybody else in Scott County. I get up and throw kindling on my coals in the stove to get my fire started back. I feed my farm animals, and I go to my second job. These meeting times are terribly hard to make because our citizens can't miss the work or miss the pay in their check. In Mrs. Starnes' latest email, she invited me to her office to discuss Scott County matters that I hope she extends to a monthly meeting. If the county administrator can't recognize that most people cannot make these meeting times and offers to make a special appointment for me to sit down with her, then surely these nefarious meeting times can be revisited. If a county claims to work for the people, but the people can't benefit from attending a monthly meeting, what does that say about the leaders of this county? Most of the people here at this meeting today have business on the agenda. They're not here for public expression. I'm usually the only one here that speaks first. There's very few. There's five, ten people usually. I'd like to question... Uh-oh. Also in Mrs. Starnes' email, she claimed that the job titles are not changed just so that someone gets paid a higher salary. I'd like to question the job title of Mr. Bill Dingus. Over the course of four years, he went from a salary of upper sixty thousand to somewhere in the eighty thousands as a maintenance man. And I need someone from the board to explain to me how he could have went from a maintenance position to an assistant county administrator who makes over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Assistant county administrator was a new position, correct? That position was created by whom and further voted on by the board? Ms. Starnes, you stated in your email that if I had any concerns with the way you were managing Scott County, you would be glad to sit down and meet with me over some things. Going forward, I will state my many concerns I have regarding your leadership role. I understand that the administrator has certain powers that doesn't need the board's approval, and I think it's wonderful that you want to put effort in finding the commonwealth space. It was unfortunate, however, that you didn't have the foresight to question the judges and the employees who use the building every day about the feasibility of the purchase or the addition before we were informed. I find your decision to purchase and use a county vehicle for your transportation needs and its upbeat frivolous to taxpayers, as well as the three hundred per night hotels for you and your board members. I'm aware that the employee of the counties are not state employees or have to follow a Commonwealth pay schedule. Are you aware that according to my research so far, Wise and Russell choose to pay their employees twice a month? I've not had time to personally check with our other district counties as of yet. Your newest modern actions, Mrs. Starnes, notably the pay study increase, the county vehicle purchase, and the creative position of county administrator assistant displays a willingness to usher Scott County into the future without benefiting Scott County citizens. Likewise, the board's current voting stance on meeting times and pay schedule for county employees displays an unwillingness to work with the public. I've spoken with Kevin through email about the county bank accounts. This morning, I'm requesting the money trail for both the ARPA funds and care funds received each time they were received. Also whether any amount of funds were redeposited into the account and whether they were redeposited. That shouldn't be a long paper trail at all and will greatly reduce my previous four-year request estimate of two thousand and ninety dollars. I'll be emailing you soon, letting you know my schedule so we can be in a time suitable to discuss the county's willingness to cut county's costs. Thank you, Board.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Powers. I'd just, uh, like to say that, uh, anything that Frida does, she does at the request of the board. Her position is directed by the members of the board, such as these people that are sitting up here beside me. And, um, you know, we, we trust her to do the right thing, and she has. Ever since she's come on the county, hasn't been in the red like it used to be, and we haven't had to take out loans like we used to. She's done a great job. According to, uh, several different financial consultants that we've had, we are doing the best that we can for a county of our size. And, uh, I just, you know, I just want to say, if you got a problem, Ms. Starnes is not the problem. It's the people on this board. And if you wanna have a problem with somebody, it's us. So, I appreciate that.
So, who was in position to hire him as county supervisor assistant?
I'm sure that was-
That was voted on by the board, but who suggested that?
I'm not sure.
Okay. That was done way back before Frida ever came. That was done when the other county administrator resigned, our retard, and we put him in so he could help the new county administrator when she came in along with the program. That was done way back, uh, I forget how many years ago.
It wasn't changed on paper? He was still receiving maintenance pay three and four years ago. He's just recently received county supervisor assistant pay?
No, you're wrong.
He was made assistant county administrator in mid-two thousand sixteen by the previous board.
Well, why is it listed in the budget, in the budget as him as under maintenance?
He is the director of public works and assistant county administrator. He does two roles.
So he does do two roles?
He does.
And you told me that he didn't. You told me that nobody that worked for you had any other job but one job?
No, I said they don't get paid multiple salaries. He was rece- he received five thousand dollars from the county administrator's salary to be assistant county administrator. That's what he gets for being assistant county administrator.
So what-
And it was taken directly from the county administrator's salary.
Uh, hold on. So you took five thousand dollars from your own salary budget?
I didn't. It was before I was hired.
Okay.
But the previous board did that. That's how he got the assistant county administrator bump.
So he went from sixty-eight thousand, this was five years ago. He was making prob- in twenty eighteen, I think he went from sixty-eight thousand, and this year he's making above a hundred thousand. In five years' time, he went over a forty-five percent raise. Is that what you're telling me?
I don't know what his previous salary was without looking back.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comment.
And I can answer her other questions while she's here. I know she has to leave. Um, the courthouse project, everyone at that courthouse was involved. Uh, we did a big courthouse study, feasibility study, that looked twenty years out.
Yes.
Every department there was involved in that, and they gave our architect their projections for their needs for twenty years. That courthouse project came in anywhere from twenty-eight to forty million dollars.
Yes.
So the board didn't want to do that project. And since then, it's been scaled down, scaled down, scaled down to an appetite that the board can afford on our immediate need. So that's the courthouse project. They have been involved.
Well, I spoke with the Commonwealths last month, and he said that when you all came over there the last time, that you, you spoke with the judges, nobody asked their opinion on it, that when they have to transfer the prisoners over to the courthouse, the prisoners are having interactions with the public. And if they have a case where, God forbid, there's a rape case or something shady going on, the, the, the victim doesn't want to have to intermingle with the prisoners.
I understand that. Everyone has a cost.
And he said that you all did not, uh, discuss that with him. That, that's personally what he told me. He said that the judges, that you all spoke with the judge and everything, that you all never got their opinions on the flow, that the flow was not gonna work in the area that you was wanting it to put.
That courthouse security is the duties of the sheriff's office, not the Commonwealth attorney's office.
So you approved a plan, what you're saying, you approved a plan that's gotta be done by the sheriff's office?
The board approved a plan.
Right. But you approved a plan and the sheriff's office designed it?
We, we-
The sheriff's office did not design it. The architect that we work with designed it. They designed the plan.
But the, but the sheriff said it was okay to use it like that. He's okay with that?
Again, it's back to the cost. And Mr. Skeen has requested to take a look at that, and we are having a meeting later this week to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's one of those tricky subjects where you have to balance costs with immediate need. You know, the county can't afford fifty million dollars for a perfect courthouse.
I completely understand. I completely understand. But the authenticity of the courthouse isn't really, uh, a matter now because somebody's come in and cobbled it up before, years before now. I, when I went up to the Co- Commonwealth's office, it doesn't look like a historical structure. You go upstairs, through, down, wiggle through another corridor and down the steps, that, that, it, nothing in that building looks historical. So I'm not sure what the cost of the historical, uh, motif, I don't know what you wanna call it. And that's not really my concern. My con- my concern is cutting spending. The frivolous spending, the county car, the hotel bills, the higher taxes. And if Bill Dingus was county assistant supervisor in twenty sixteen, why was he on the, on the budget being paid as maintenance? It has nothing on the budget. In that budget that I have, and I can present it at next meeting or whenever we meet, it doesn't say Bill Dingus county assistant supervisor. It says Bill Dingus maintenance in every one of those. It, it, this is the only year it lists him as a supervisor. So I mean, that's mis- that's, that's not me misunderstanding. That's misrepresentation. Wouldn't you agree?
I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that because he's had these duties for a long time, whether or not that's reflected on the-
Well, if he was assistant supervisor, that, that precedes maintenance. That should have been on his, that should have been first on his tax, you know, on his payroll. Bill Dingus supervisor. It shouldn't have been Bill Dingus maintenance supervisor, assistant supervisor. You know what I'm saying? It should have been supervisor.
I don't, I don't know.
He's listed in the budget. He's listed in the maintenance budget. That's where his salary line item is at. He's not in the county administrator's budget. He's under the maintenance budget.
Right. We're up here having a pissing match, but un- it's list- he's listed right under you, Frida. Write down a few names from you. Ask county administrator assistant.
But not in the budget. That's not where he's at in our line item budget.
No.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying.
Okay.
The vehicle, that is part of my employment contract. Um, a previous board gave me that as a benefit. That is not free. I do pay taxes on that vehicle. Uh, that's on my W-2. Um, so that's not a free benefit that everybody thinks it is. That's not something that's, uh, out of the ordinary. Check with your other counties. Check with Wise County. They have a county administrator vehicle. That vehicle was paid with a grant, part of it, and with the county money, the other part. And because I am on six committees and are here and there, that's why I have a take-home vehicle.
But that's not our fault that you're on six committees and that you need him.
It is the board's fault.
It is the board's fault.
And we have put her on six committees because she is the best person for that job.
And, and the financial increase in the debts that you're saying Scott County has resolved and pay you, we've increased, uh, we've decreased our debt, correct?
We've decreased our debt-
By several hundred thousand.
And increased our credit rating, all because of Frida's work.
Well, I, I'm under the understanding that it had more to do with Kevin holding it in, in, in the accounts. It had nothing to do with Frida.
No.
Kevin has only been in the office for a year.
It was in, it was in my understanding that Kevin was holding it in these accounts, but we, I wanna see the money and where it's been spent.
Credit rating's more than just how much money you have in your account. It's your cash flow and your assets and your liabilities.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Just making sure.
And as far as being paid twice, um, we have nine hundred and fifty employees. They're paid once a month. For us to process payroll for that many people, we would have to have another person. So if-
You have an assistant?
He can't do payroll.
Wow. He can do everything else. Okay?
That, that's, that's, that's an accountant's job, not a, not a maintenance supervisor, not a, uh, county administrator's job. Uh, I do understand where you're coming from on that. Some people have bills, but I myself have been paid monthly, uh, for most of my career, and I've done just fine at it. Um, so-
And these other counties also don't have the school system as an integrated purchasing and accounting department. We do the school system bills. We do the school systems payroll. These other counties aren't doing that. So that's eight hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred employees that the other counties aren't having to process payroll for. We are not able to do it with the staff we have now. And it's always been, it's not a Frida decision. It's always been once a month. These ladies have been here thirty years. It's always been once a month.
I understand, but you're willing to usher in new ideas about pay and cars and this and that and additions, but you wanna leave meeting times at nine o'clock where the room is barely filled.
Hold on. The, the meeting times are a decision of the board and they were-
I understand that. I'm speaking to every one of you when I speak about meeting times. I'm not just speaking to Frida.
It was a decision of six to one for that one.
Right. You were the only one that voted against it.
That is correct.
I, I remember. I was here. I'm voting for the whole board. Every one of you all are willing to increase pay. We gotta have that increased pay. We gotta increase revenue. But you don't want to include the public in the times that we have to be here. We, we have to read or look on New- on YouTube. Y'all don't even put it in the paper anymore.
We did put things in.
Because it's not feasible. It's not feasible. We can pay the maintenance man. We can give him a great big raise or whatever, over a hundred thousand, but we can't put it in the paper every week. We have to put it on YouTube for the ma and pals that's running a farm. You know they're not gonna look on YouTube once a month.
It's also on cable, broadcast several times a, uh, a week.
On channel thirty.
Yeah. I know, I know because my grandma calls me every time she sees my face on, on TV.
You can go on YouTube and you can put the date of the meeting and pop it up right in there, and it's live right now.
I know. I've seen it several times. But how, how many people are here at this meeting? I, I don't care how many people can go to YouTube. How many people are in this meeting that can be here today? They're out feeding their cows. They're out in their jobs. They don't, it, it would be easier for these people of Scott County to make a six o'clock meeting time than it would be for a nine o'clock meeting time.
They did that last year.
We tried that.
We've tried it about three times since I've been here, and it did not work.
It didn't.
It was a bit more crowd of the night than it was of the morning. It, we've tried it three different times.
And one was last year, from February to June. It was at six P.M. Nobody else-
It was, and nobody came. Nobody will come until y'all, when, nobody has the interest in coming until y'all wanna pass things like this right here. Nobody's gonna come. And I remember reading the email that you wrote to Chris Manus about something being leaked because, and, because y'all have to discuss things in the email about it being leaked because we're not allowed to be here. We can't be here because of our schedules. You all are, uh, appointing two members to the twenty-twenty-six budget commit- committee. There's several things on here that people would like to be a part of, but we can't be here. And just because people are not here doesn't mean that you can't give them the option to be here. You are our representatives of the county. If we cannot be, if you cannot be available to us, you need a thermos of coffee or, or retired or two of them. You, you can't keep up at late at night. We need to be able to come to these meetings instead of them being late like the taxes.
The taxes.
The last meeting when everybody was uproar over eighty and talked to him like a dog.
Because that was misinformation on the department.
That was just me that did that. I'm the only one that really got on his case about that.
Well-
May I say something, please? I have an open-door policy being on this board. Anybody can call me, come by my house, email me, text me, message me at any time from my district, and my district knows that because I say that I have meetings with my district so that I can discuss things with them. So I have an open-door policy, and I don't, I, I, I believe everybody here on this board has an open-door policy. But we are your voice. So if you cannot come to these meetings, then by all means, call us.
Absolutely.
Email us, message us, talk to us, because that's why we're here.
Why didn't you vote for something besides the nine A.M. voting time? If you're our, if you're our voice, why didn't you vote for something other than a nine A.M. meeting time?
We tried that.
You're talking about this other-
We tried the six o'clock.
You tried, and nobody showed up. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't be able to be here if you want to be here. You can't deny them the privilege of being here. You're talking about-
We're not denying anybody a privilege. We're not denying anybody a privilege.
I, I took vacation just to be here today from my job.
This is your job. This is your first job.
I have two jobs. I work, I work, plus I do this on the side.
Well, if this isn't your side job, then you don't need to be doing it. This needs to be your first job.
You starve to death if you say it's your first job.
I'm gonna disagree with you on that. Listen, on my off days, I am calling people. Last night, I called two people from my district and talked to them for over an hour each, talking to them about different things about VDOT and, and this and that. And I enjoy what I do because I want to help this county.
Yes, but you all wanna talk about what other counties are doing. Other counties have their meeting at six o'clock. It don't matter if the room is filled or not. They have their meetings at six o'clock. Y'all have your planning commission meetings at six, at six o'clock because you know people are gonna have a hard time making the nine o'clock meetings. You wanna talk about other counties, come up to par.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I just wanna add that I too am always available. I have took multiple phone calls during the week. I too work a job, and this is not my primary job. It's not. I do this. No, you don't tell me what I do.
It shouldn't be your primary job, but it should be your primary focus.
You don't think that is my primary focus?
If it was, you wouldn't have voted for a nine A.M. meeting time.
Ladies, ladies, let's bring the temperature down just a little bit.
You would have voted for some, a meeting time where the public could attend.
And I understand that you're concerned about that. I do. Because you know what? I have a job just like Michelle does. We both work at Eastman's. My job is my primary. That's my means of income. Do you know what we get paid for this?
How we pay our bills?
How do I pay my bills?
That's why you do it because it's an act of service. It's not an act of pay. You should do it.
I don't care what I get paid here. I-
You should do it because you wanna do it. You want, you should-
You don't think I do that?
Okay, well then why didn't you vote for a later time for the citizens to be here?
We did. We tried that.
You tried it, and nobody came.
No.
And so you decided we, we'll just make it-
You. We decided. I did decide.
We just decided to make it more convenient for us.
We decided.
To make it more convenient for you all, correct?
Let's end this discussion.
It'd be nice if people paid their taxes today.
I sure am glad to see you.
You're supposed to go up first.
I know. I, I, I was ready to come first, but I'm taking time from Snowflake Road, and I had a, a lot of complaining. It ain't no need to come in up here complaining. So, there's no reason for complaining. And I, I could get up here and throw VDOT under the bus, but we all know dirt roads in Scott County is a mess. And the vehicles and the buses, they're not cheap. And we, we just hope and pray that y'all, your all's trip to Richmond was a success. And I hope that Mr. Kilgore listens.
Yes, ma'am.
We need more money for dirt roads. It's like the old saying says, you can't ride the train without money. And, and we need to bring more businesses into Scott County. I think that's a, that's a priority. It needs to be, bring more businesses in. And I want to keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan. I don't like the six-year plan, but I wanna thank you all.
We're trying to do right by you, Ms. Starnes. Appreciate you.
Gary Baker from, uh, Boose Creek. Chris?
Yes, sir.
I wanna congratulate you
Thank you, sir.
on being chairman, and you got a big set of shoes to fill there, but-
I think condolences are welcome.
Mike done an excellent job while he was up there, and well, y'all all do an excellent job. And Frida especially, and Sam. We're blessed to have these two women, and-
Yes, thank you for saying that. Appreciate that.
And all the ladies and gentlemen on this board, y'all do a wonderful job. And, uh, I was asked to present, uh, these four items on here that the, uh, Farm Bureau, uh, tried to get through the General Assembly. Now, they was in the crossover, uh, thing here yesterday, going over to the Senate with their bills. And Dennis Jones, our main guy from our district, uh, sent this to me. I told him I was coming down here. One of the supervisors asked me to do this, but it won't take me but a second, Chris. Uh, uh, we're trying to establish an insanity grant program by July the first of twenty-six to address the shortage of large animal bedding urns in Virginia. Uh, I reckon they got that passed or, or have almost got it passed. And the other is one that I don't quite underst- oh, I wanna say something else. Bill, Bill Dingus does an excellent job too. And, uh, anyway, uh, I think you, the whole staff here. Amy always took care of me when I was ordering stuff and tan. Anyway, make a long story short, getting back to this. Sorry to interrupt. I don't quite understand this, but Bill might do it, but there are greater flexibility in the reallocation of fifty percent of the unobligated cost shared dollars by the Soil and Water Conservation Board. Anyway, they pushed that, and they're thinking they're gonna get that, uh, created. But two bills that they opposed is creating a state mandated, one-size-fits-all standard of cut- criteria for all localities pertaining to setbacks, fencing, solar panel hype, and visual impacts, and a decommissioning plan for the siding of utility-scale solar facilities on agriculture, commercial, and industrials-owned property. Now, they're hoping they can get that killed. Somebody's trying to get that through. And the other one is opposing removing exemptions from Virginia's, they oppose this, removing the exemptions for Virginia's minimum wage requirements for persons employed as a farm laborer or farm employee and certain temporary foreign workers. Now, getting back to VDOT. Farm Bureau did get two things on their policy. That why they didn't try to get it implemented this year, I don't know. But one of them was get to keep all the side dishes cleaned out and, uh, work with the EPA. Maybe this Lee Zeldin can calm down the EPA a little bit, but, uh, than what they've been doing. But, uh, VDOT's done a wonderful job with what they have, and the other thing that we put up is to go back to where it was several years ago before Kane done away with, uh, our money for the localities. We'd like to see, well, we had three in Scott County with supervision, manpower, and vehicles. All the maintenance vehicles that we need. We want to try to get that put back. Now, why they didn't bring it up this year, that's for them to know. They've gotten a lot more sense than I do. But, uh, we're work- we hope that we can help VDOT and get it back to where it was back in the old days because, now, we had good roads back then. Side dishes kept cleaned out, and I know they have trouble with the EPA, but I'm hoping that'll change. And I know they have trouble with the EPA, but I'm hoping that'll change. But look at why VDOT's here, where they started on Boosie Creek at, uh, Overland Drive. If they'd just went three quarters of a mile on up the road with that big ditch digger. They would've got all of them ditches cleaned out from, up the way from where they was starting at Overland. The other day when we have them rains, that water comes right down the middle of the road, worsting the roadway and poles in the road. You can't get through, but anyway. I know we're having a hard job and appreciate your time, Chris. I'm, I'm praying for you. Hope you do a good job.
Thank you. I do need the prayers.
Good morning. I'm Larry Vickers of Nicholsville. I'm here representing Keith Park. I'm the president of the seniors. Uh, just before I start talking about Keith Park, I was talking a little bit about VDOT. I was driving down the road. It looks like Red Bag City between here and Nicholsville. All the garbage is picked up. Uh, I think it's a challenge for the county to look at root cause. Doing the same things over, picking garbage up every two or three months and asking VDOT to come pick up those bags is not really solving the problem. Think about some kind of program you could put in to solve this garbage problem. It's an awful appearance for the county. And I worked in, uh, the computer industry for years. And many times I went out looking for sites to put offices. I could tell you, if I was driving out and drove through and seen the appearance that we've got in the county, there would be no way in the world I would put an office. Having said that, it's just a challenge to look at what could you do to stop the garbage being thrown out the windows?
Mr. Vickers, uh, about a year ago, I contacted with those state police headquarters and talked to, I think it was Colonel Lyer, and asked him about the number of tickets that had been written for litter in the southwest region. It was zero.
Yep.
So.
But you can establish a fine that would make it and make an example. One or two people might change how many people throw it out. It don't, you don't have to catch a thousand. You'd only catch, catch two or three and the word will get around. But that's not my bellywake. I'm just making an observation. Anyway, I came down here to talk about Keith Park. The state of the park is good. All the buildings are generally in good repair. The park overall, the upkeep is good. Uh, last year, we had a hundred and six paid rentals. Uh, sixteen, no charges. That included twelve for the senior meetings, two for the Ruatán, uh, who had Bingo out there to raise money to help with, uh, uh, Meals of Love and so forth. One for the PSA to do the, uh, Moxon and the Nicholsville Water Project. And I did a, a solar information PowerPoint presentation on, uh, the solar farms. And that, that was mainly an education presentation presenting both the pros and the cons without trying to be biased in either direction. Uh, we had about something around a hundred people then, I think, up in the nineties, I believe. Financially, in two thousand twenty-five, we used a program called Quicken to track all of our finances at the park. There's monthly reports to the senior, uh, meeting and everybody's given a copy of all the income and expenses that we incur. Last year, we took in twelve thousand and twenty-eight dollars. However, uh, seventeen hundred, that intake was seventeen, seventeen fifty, I'm sorry. Uh, that intake was the money that the county provided to, uh, stain the, the, uh, main building. So actually, our revenue was down around ten-five, actually. If you compare that to two thousand and twenty, when we had COVID, we only had an income of about twenty-nine hundred. So substantial increase over what we had then. In two thousand nineteen, we were, we were about nine thousand. So we have grown in revenue. This year, on January the first, we voted to have an increase in, uh, charges for our park and cleanup. Uh, kind of our billing policies a little bit. We were allowing people to come in an hour before at no charge, leave an hour later at no charge. So we've gone to one flat rate. You get eight hours anytime on a weekend for one twenty-five. But your time starts, if it starts at eight o'clock, that includes your setup and all that. So we don't have that hour before and hour after anymore. During the week, we're at a hundred dollars. If anybody comes in and wants us to clean the building, we're gonna charge them a fifty-dollar cleaning charge on top of that. In addition, we're gonna charge twenty dollars an hour for additional hours. Uh, audio, video, audio is twenty five, or fifteen dollars, audio and video. That's with a projector and everything, is twenty-five dollars for a session. Our financial records were audited by Dean Tax Center and they found, had no findings of, uh, any problems at all. Our major expenses last year, building supplies, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars. A lot of that was involved in, uh, lawnmower maintenance. And we bought new tires for NASCAR lawnmower. It's, it doesn't have a shroud on it anymore. So it looks like it went into turn one and didn't come out too healthy. But, uh, maintenance supplies, that's cleaning supplies, toilet paper, da-da-da, that was fifteen hundred dollars. We stained the building thirty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, I, uh, we also put in, we changed the concession stand lighting from fluorescent to LEDs. We were having a lot of problems out there with starters and stuff. The stuff had been in for twenty-five years. We, we swapped all that out and it's all now LED lighting, which certainly helps with the electric bill, Amy. Uh, I can't go, I couldn't go without saying that Scott maintenance and the Scott workers have been really helpful all year. Uh, uh, without them, uh, we'd have a lot of problems. We just don't have the volunteers to do the work that we used to have. And Bill and his guys have been really helpful, uh, in, in terms of coming up and fixing some of the vandalism we've had. And the Scott workers jumped in after, uh, the hurricane and helped us do the, uh, the minor cleanup. Uh, we, Bill contracted out, uh, to get the, uh, the big stuff moved for us. Other facilities we have at the park and events that we have, Nicholsville Days, of course, happens every year. The Little League baseball team continues to be successful and draws, uh, a, a lot of crowds out there, particularly in the spring, up until about the latter part of June. The high school baseball team plays at the park. And, uh, the basketball courts are used in good weather. The kids from, in a stroller up to ten or twelve years old, use the playground equipment. And there's a one-mile walking trail. The park is really used. It is one of the most used facilities probably in the county. I would expect, and I, I know I've made some rough counts on the senior building. We exceed five thousand people using that building every year. My expectation is in and out of the park, that we go well over five figures, over ten thousand people in the park in a year. It is a well-used and I've said this before, probably one of the most efficient operations that the county runs. Because of the volunteers up there and the work that they do. Uh, challenges we have or have had this year, certainly Hurricane, or Hurricane Helen made a mess up there. There were huge trees down across the trails and the woods out through there. The power lines were down. And, uh, Bill got Dave Gardner, is that correct? Dave Gardner did that, right? To come in and clean all that out. They got the big stuff out. Then Justin Venable brought in the Scott workers and cleaned out the small brush and, uh, so all that got done. And, uh, uh, we're back. We look good. We look really good. We, we still, uh, I mentioned our NASCAR John Deere mower. Uh, it's twenty years old and got twenty-seven hundred hours on it right now. And we've been band-aiding it for the last two or three years. I took it over to Scott's or the Cox tractor and the mechanic said they had never seen a mower of that make with twenty-seven hundred hours on it. So it may move this year and it may blow up this year. If it does, just be prepared. I could be down here begging for mercy, so. Uh, playground equipment, it's also about twenty years old. Uh, it's getting some metal fatigue, warranty, and there's rusted areas. And we've done some maintenance on it. We've got it, kinda got it patched back together. The company that we bought it from is out of business. Was out of Canada. And then we bought it of a, a local vendor, but, uh, anyway, we can't get parts for it. So, uh, I think we can hold that thing together for a while, but just as a, uh, just for information, we're looking at metal fatigue and some things to, in the next few years, we could, might have to do something there. We had vandalism this year and quite a bit of it, really. Uh, two times, a lady's bathroom had holes kicked in the walls, kicked through the sheet rock. And I think washed with her fist. The little cabin where the baseball team uses for a locker room, the sliding glass door on it, somebody threw a block through it, busted the sliding glass door out. The main gate, uh, was broken. And so, uh, thank goodness for security cameras. Security cameras that Matt helped us put in, uh, uh, caught two of those. They caught the gate vandalism and they also caught the ones going into the bathrooms and kicking the holes in the wall. The little cabin, we didn't get that on the camera. But thank goodness, that vandal made a video of it and posted it. So we got him too. At, at any rate, uh, the Scott County Sheriff's Department is prosecuting for the kicking the holes in the wall and the little cabin. The main gate was broken by some, uh, juveniles and we agreed for, uh, service work, clean out the flower beds over there for their payment. They didn't intend to do it. It was, it wasn't their intent, but they knew better. But anyway, they come over and did that. So we're, we're bowled that and hopefully the sheriff's department is, they, they picked up their surveillance little more and making certain that nobody's back in that park after dark. So they're running them out now. And, uh, between the cameras and the sheriff's department, I think we can stop mu- much of that. The next thing I wanna talk about is succession planning. Uh, I organized or asked the, uh, senior citizens to have a succession planning committee. And Cindy Green's gonna hand it up. Now, what do I mean by successive planning? We've talked many times down here about the people that attend the seniors are aging out. They're dying, they're getting sick, and they're not able to do those jobs anymore. And we're down to, uh, a skeleton crew basically running the operations of the park. The plan is to try to attract new people to the seniors and hopefully pick up some more people that will help with the volunteer stuff to keep that off. We can still retain that with a senior citizen without having to come to the county and, uh, ask for more help or worst case, have to give it back to the county. Because if, if that park goes back to the county, it's probably gonna take a minimum of two headcounts to keep it operational and up to standards. And that brings me to my last two points. Projects for next year. We need to mark the parking lines in the, uh, in the parking lots that are fading out. So we probably have to do that. Uh, might need to seal it. I've gotta look at that and decide if we need to seal it. If we had to seal it, we're talk, talking about probably a thousand plus dollars. The last thing I wanna talk about is, uh, Project MF, uh, SMF twenty-five. Uh, currently, uh, we, we don't have any place to, to store all the stuff we've got. Weed eaters, backpack blowers, uh, the big blower to blow leaves with, uh, chainsaws, da-da-da, it goes on and on and on. And, uh, we, we've got, we've got the wheelhouse down there, which is something like a eight by eight or something, maybe a little bigger. And we got a lawnmower in that, three weed eaters, a backpack blower, a chainsaw, and numerous other hand tools and stuff. If you look at the, uh, at the picture there, you will see what a muck it is. I can't think of a better word to put on it. It's a muck with a capital M. Give me the next one, Bill. I'll, I'll back up and show you. There is a lawnmower. You can see. We don't, there's no shroud on it, so it, it looks like a NASCAR engine sitting out there in the front end of it. Okay, next picture, Bill. Okay, that's a picture of the stor- that, that's a picture, for this mic so you can hear me. That is a picture of the storage room at, beside the concession stand. You can hardly walk through there. There's a water wheel in there that the baseball team uses. Behind that is, is a mule mix for the baseball field, uh, marking tool, uh, uh, tool to mark the baseball lines. Back in the back, there's a, uh, a wagon and then behind that is a power washer and, and all those shelves are completely full. So bottom line is, we just don't have room for anything to organize anything right now. Here's what I'm, uh, suggesting that we do. There is three shelters out there currently. Uh, this shelter, uh, holds about, uh, about thirty people. It's rarely ever used. The reason for that is we built another shelter up at the concession stand a few years back. And it's about the same size or maybe a little bigger and you can pull right up to it. It's a lot easier to use. So there, there's a shelter I'm talking about. Bill's doing that. The other shelter is over at the, uh, concession stand. Okay, well, okay, that's okay, Bill. Stay right there. Right beside of that one, right behind it, is a shelter that holds about a hundred people. And there, so we got two shelters. Bottom line is, we have plenty of shelters. We wanna take that, that shelter and enclose it and make a, uh, a, a storage and a maintenance facility out of it. That will require putting about, uh, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three sheets of T-one-eleven on it. Putting a roll-up garage door in. Uh, the T-one-eleven will cost probably twelve, fourteen hundred dollars. The roll-up garage door, a nine by eight, is about, uh, seven or eight hundred. The electric running down there and putting a conduit in, you're talking over a thousand. So we're probably looking somewhere around five thousand dollars. I, I'm not gonna ask you for the money, so you can rest easy. What I wanna do is, we have some money, operational money left in, in our treasury. We're gonna use some of that. But we also have capital money. Uh, some of you have been on the board. I know Mr. Teeters heard me talk about the capital money we have that we helped back and didn't spend it for operating costs. We wanted, we, we'd like to take what we need out of that capital money to make up anything we can't do with the operating expenses. And we plan on doing that project pretty early spring. I'm out looking for contractors and the best, most efficient way to do that right now. But I, to move that money out of the, uh, uh, capital fund, Amy's got the signature to do that, I believe, right?
I don't think so.
You don't? I thought, I thought you wrote the check. Well, I don't, I don't know. The county administrator may have to sign off on it too, but the money, where did that money come from? It was grant money that the park went out and applied for grants. But to facilitate getting those grants, it was done under the county's name, that's where the money come from. And at one time, we built the bridge out of it, part of it, and we ended up with thirty-some thousand left a few years ago, and we took ten out to add that concession stand, front of the concession stand, where we got the picnic tables up there. So, we're down to, I think, about ninety thousand now, if I remember correctly.
I think in the past, your board had, or they had to approve it, your board?
Yeah, the board will approve it, yeah.
And then like two people sign off on it?
Yeah, I signed off on it the last time. Jeff's now NARA, so he'll sign off on it, and then.
And then we processed the check.
That's all, has signed off on it, I guess, is it?
I think it was two signatures on each invoice.
The senior and the, okay, so me and Jeff had to sign off on it, and then you could write the check? Okay. Okay, questions? No questions? I'm gone.
I think you've got it figured out.
Pardon?
I said, I think you've already got it figured out.
What you need, yeah? We know what we need, we've just gotta go do it.
Hey, we appreciate you coming with solutions.
All right, thank you. Did you say something?
No, I just said yes, I appreciate you coming with solutions, I agree with that.
All right, anybody else wish to speak here in citizens' expression?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Jake Dougherty, and I'm the head patrol officer of Scott County. Just wanted to be here for a brief moment this morning to promote Pines for Paws event Marsh Regional Blood Center is doing on February the twenty-fourth through February the twenty-eighth at Bristol-John City and Kingsport Donation Centers. Everyone that donates blood during that time will be asked which organization they want to, ten dollars to be given to for a local animal shelter. That can be whichever you choose, and you'll also receive a T-shirt, a themed tote bag. They do this every year, I've never come before the board to talk about it before, but it just, timing was right today, and we just wanted to get, get it promoted and let everybody know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank the board for fixing the intercom system, we can hear it.
I'm glad, I'm glad you can hear my mumbling. Anyone else for citizen expression?
My name is Tina Mash, I'm with the Scott County Humane Society. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we have got our spay and neuter program back up. I have got a local vet that's actually gonna work with us, so we do not have to drive to Avington, Bristol anymore. We will not be dealing with Margaret Mitchell no more, we're gonna be using a local vet. She's going to guarantee the same prices that they use. I've worked with this vet in the past when I was working, so I trust her with everything, and she's wonderful, and she's going to really help this community by doing what she's doing, by helping us getting the discounted prices and taking care of animals here in Scott County. I know we have a county vet, I understand David is and stuff. The one thing she did tell me is she will not euthanize anything unless it absolutely has to be euthanized. She's actually with the Humane Society, if we have to takes up to the vet, we will be using her. She's located in Weber City, it's Dr. Harrison, she was with Dr. Fuller. And I worked for Dr. Fuller for almost five years, and I worked for her too, and she's wonderful, and she's willing to step up and help Scott County with, we have bad issues with all these animals that need to be fixed, and people dumping animals, and she takes animals in herself, fixes them out of her pocket, and rehums them herself. Also, we were wondering, you guys used to give the Humane Society some money to help, and we didn't know why that stopped. And we were wanting to see if there was any way that that could be helped go back so we can help more people.
You should be getting money from the DMV tax, you should get that every year. It's not a lot, I believe this year it was a little over a hundred dollars, but that was approved, I believe, at the November board meeting, so that money should be coming to you. I'll double check on that today, but I think that was a little over a hundred dollars, so that'll help some. But that comes each year, and the board directs that to the Humane Society.
Okay, and another thing is, we have a cat problem in Scott County. And I know, I have a cat problem at my house because I take in every foster, because people call me, oh, we got baby kittens, and I always love to hear people saying, well, it's cat season, no. Kitten season is every day. People don't realize, the minute a cat has a kitten, they can get pregnant within an hour after having those kittens. I mean, there's no kittens, there's no such thing as kitten season. Kitten cats can have babies just like rabbits constantly, just back to back to back. And I wanted to see if there was anything we can get approval to do a catch and release by getting these animals, cats fixed, vaccinated, and having a colony put in. I've seen them in Irwin, they built the school, kids built little houses, and they, you know, we go out, me and the president of the Humane Society and some of the other teachers at the school system, we go out, we feed these animals, but we would like to have an area that we can have a little area where we can put these cats that are having vaccinated and fixed, and be able to just have them where they're, instead of some at the high school and, you know, some here and everywhere else. We're, I mean, we're running short on, we don't have, nobody will foster, we can't get anybody to foster. There, between the four of us, we literally have more than we should. But that's also not the animal's fault that has nowhere to go, it's because these people out here irresponsible, not spaying neutering their animals or just dumping their animals. And I think that's another thing, I think that these people that are dumping, there should be more harsher things because there's too many animals in Scott County that's being dumped. And it's, it's, I get calls all the time, and I talk to Jake all the time too, and, I mean, I got people telling me, well, there's this dog out here, and then I get a call, can you come pick this dog up, or can you get these cats? And, I mean, I've traveled all the way to the end of Scott County out there, Boosie Creek, to pick up a cat, and it's kittens because the elderly lady was afraid that she'd fall and get hurt. And I can't live like that, I thought if she would fall, get hurt, that's gonna eat at me, especially if something would happen to her, she would pass away, because some little cat got underneath her feet because they got excited thinking they were gonna get fed. I just think that we need to have better laws and stuff in Scott County about animals. I mean, there's too many people that, they should be prosecuted a little bit more when it comes to the animals and higher fines. And I know we got the dog tags for the county, and we've got, everybody has to have a rabies. I know state of Virginia states, if you have an animal, it has to have a rabies vaccine. But if we could have more rabies clinics and stuff to get these animals vaccinated, you know, David is our county vet. If he could step up just a little bit more and be like, okay, we're gonna do this, you know, just to help the community a little bit more, instead of people trying to cross over the state line to get this taken care of. There's just a lot with, you know, the Humane Society, we do a lot. We don't, I know we get some recognition, but people don't know the backs, we don't get paid. We do all this, it either comes out of our pockets or what some grants we do get. You know, we work a lot. I get calls at ten o'clock at night, can you spay, did he help me spay and neuter my cat or my dog? And I'm like, we have business hours, let's try to stick to those, but I still talk to them. I get people calling me, well, I've got, I need to feed, you know, I, you know, can you help us with some dog food? Or, you know, we're between checks and stuff like that. And I have talked to Food Lion, they're gonna start trying to help us get donations in and stuff like that. But we need to see if we can get a little bit more help of like, so we can get more, to help more people in Scott County. And I don't know what you guys can do. I just said, I told the other people that I've worked with on the board that I would come forward and talk to you guys and see if there's any way that you guys could help us a little bit more.
We'll keep our eyes open for any opportunities that we can.
I mean, if you can lead us to some more grants or anything like that, we're more than welcome to look into anything to help us, because these, these animals don't deserve this. These, I mean, if you can abuse an animal, you can abuse a child or any human being, and these animals, you know, they didn't have to be put here, so we're trying what we can to take care of them. I know Jake does a good job by doing what he does by going out here and, you know, collecting up the animals in the county and everything, but they're overwhelmed. Sometimes I take in a dog, if I find a dog, and I'll be like, Jake, I'll keep it this long, you know, and sometimes it lasts three months, but I do what I can, and, I mean, most of the time, if I keep a dog, he does give me some dog food for the puppies and stuff, but the, like, the bear dogs, that comes out my pocket. And, I mean, I don't have a problem with helping an animal, but at the same time, if we can get a little bit more help out of the county, and if they can, if you guys can approve us to do a colony, that would help us a lot too with the cat problem. Because we want to test some of these cats, and if they are, you know, sick, I hate to say it, yes, they need to be euthanized. We have a lot of sick cats in Scott County, there's been a lot at the high school that we picked up and have to euthanize. A lot of people don't like to hear that, but I've worked in vet medicine, I've worked with large animal and small animal, and we don't want sick animals out here contaminating other animals.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Nash. Anybody else for public comment? Johnny, did you want to say something?
I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
I might be wrong here, but while I'm looking out for my, my neighbor, if you know, and my name's John Burton. I got two names, Laura and John, okay? And I do have a neighbor, okay? And we've got a cropper down there, down in Fairview, okay? First problem, the hardtop bunk up so far. And them youngers gotta come out of, five youngers come out bunking, check the bus down at Burton Town, port the road. I don't see why they can't take a bus tonight. You can pave the road, but you can't take a bus tonight? What's the problem? If they ain't gonna drive, let them take tandem truck tonight. Fix the road, then there's not none, tandem truck, fix that hardtop, okay? What, what, I'm wondering what's the problem? Five youngers coming in, and that bus come by other house this morning, about six o'clock. And they got to check the bus, about ten to fifteen minutes, I can see. What's the problem here? They're gonna pay youngers like ever, but hell. You see, when you want two youngers to check the bus, fifteen to six o'clock in the morning?
No, sir.
And bring them out a mile, haul them out a mile, and check the bus, and hit the paved road? And tandem going in there? I took tandem in there, I hauled home in there, and there's not none. Thirty years ago, coupe bus used to go in there, now he can't go in there? It's, it's a problem some way. We need to be looking in that problem, okay? Well, y'all just sit back in the corner, it ain't probably, it ain't fairing y'all, okay? But them people need help. And we've got a fire hall down there. They put one of them little brook pipes in, put the water in, put one of them little brook pipes in. It takes thirty minutes to fill up the truck, fire truck. Of why they didn't put a fire hydrant in there, or they could fill the truck up? You mean, you come out there, where they went, they didn't put no fire hydrant, nothing in Burton, down there in Fairview, no way. I don't see what the problem is. I mean, here, here they are, they can put a fire hydrant out in the cow pasture, and can't put one at a station? Okay, you take thirty minutes. See, I worked, helped us fill up our empty, volunteer, that's a good thing. And that's one of the things here that, I tell you about my neighbor, okay? I don't want to see my neighbor burn earth, okay? On the camel, can't get no water in the truck, okay? Time you get, say you go down the road, five miles, okay? Okay, that's gonna take you at least ten to fifteen minutes, okay? Time you get back, and that, that thirty minutes, God, and you're looking at almost ninety minutes, I doubt. To fill that truck, that person could be done gone for, for the get down, okay? When we get back, okay? The crossing, crossing, we're gonna go up the road five miles. But I can pass the station, that's across the fire hydrant, we're gonna, the fire hydrant, down on Fairview. It's down over the, Karen Crown, you know, we're Karen Crown, like, that's across the one we got. And that's only one we got working, and we put that little brook pipe in there, the station. I kept asking, I kept asking, a long time, it's over here, get that in. And I don't see why we can't get a fire hydrant down there. I mean, and them other people up and down the food line need water too, and they can't even get water. It's, it's, put your drive down there now, okay?
Mr. Manis, they got, is it water down there where the fire hall is?
Yeah, they have water down the fire hall, yeah. They have water down to the fire hall, like, he's talking about the rest of Fairview, and talking about the lack of fire hydrants.
Yeah, the water line they put in down by the fire hall is too small to carry the water for a fire hydrant.
Now, hey, a six-inch ride, a six-inch ride, we got down human, all the way down, six-inch ride, okay? They got fire hydrants in there for, we're going toward the deal. Hey, you, one neighbor's just a good, and the next neighbor, y'all are just a good. God don't look, nobody else, nobody, nowhere, he hugged everybody, just the same. If I'm so mean, he still hug me, okay? And that's where you should be. It's in the dip, isn't it? And down at Burton Town, on the other end of Burton Town, they didn't hardtop here, cracking going food down. They got our cracking going food down, okay? I mean, cracking trail, and everything else going food down. They didn't hardtop that, they just went up so far, the bunking down, went out toward the bunking. And a cow pasture, can't even take a bus, they say they can't.
Your name's John Burton?
What's the, what's the matter here, boy? What, what, what we're doing? We're just sitting back in the corner and not paying no attention, and nobody, what? Do y'all get out and drive out and look around, see?
I do, I do admire you, and I do look at some down in your area. And I've just now figured out who you are. You probably remember me, me and you pushed snow several years down in there, and I over Fairview and all down in there together.
Is that all you, is that all you got for us today, Johnny, or you got?
End of that road, Burton Town over there, hit worth that whole lot, just ever switched here. And they have to come down and fill them down. This guy the other day had to get a tow truck, pull him out. I tell you, whoa, get a tow truck, pull you out of the hole? Y'all don't want to do that, do you, so are you be picking up, and there's not none? Well, I think they can't see, they can't take that road food, eh? Well, I think they can't see, they can't pick that road through there. There ain't nobody kicking against nothing. What the, what the problem here? Who will tax money, they're going? We'll pay taxes. Everybody's gotta pay tax. And they're talking about that money here, money there. Where, where the money go to? Where'd the money went to, that, them fire hydrant? They could put one intersection, or some more, every once in a while, help my neighbor a little bit, you know? Cut that down just a little bit. That what, hey, that why it's just a question, if I have. I don't want to go with mama all, and get mama all out of the house. I, I, I need to take y'all somewhere with me sometime. When somebody burn out, and they put aside, I can take you back. I'll be there. And that's when I was trying to pray, trying to get some help there, you know? Uh, uh, we're sitting back in the corner, okay? I will be there, I, I, I don't know what to say sometime. But if I can be of help to you, call on me. Text me, see what I can do. I can just do so much, okay? But I'm gonna be giving you a hundred cents, okay? I don't care who's doing it.
I'll talk to the school system about the bus and see if there's a reason.
I mean, they're, they're looking at them too. And, and, and that road before it washed down, that needs fixed, and they picked them up and fixed. They need paved them through there. Thirty years, it's been in the plan thirty years, six. And it ain't got done yet, and I don't know what the matter. They can take a road over and pave and do this, and do that, and do this, do that. I ain't nobody nobody help. But I work to be treated, just like you. Now, hey, if I said something hurt your feelings, I apologize to you, okay? But I won't take nothing back, okay?
You did good, Johnny. We appreciate you coming out. I'll see what I can do.
Y'all have a good day. My, 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 look in that, my look in the fire hydrant, my see if we can get a fire hydrant down there. That little, little thing don't, don't mean nothing to them.
Mr. Perry, uh, I'll be in a meeting tomorrow with the PSA and the power departments. And I'll bring this up with them and see what we can do.
And, and they say you're what?
Did you say the six inch line was, is that what it is down there now?
It's got a six inch line down through there. Down past the fire hydrant.
Why did they say that they couldn't do the hydrant?
I thought it was because they put the smaller water line in.
No.
Down Fairview.
He, he called six inch line, not run down through there. That's the main line, okay?
Are you sure it's a six inch down that far?
It's a six inch line.
I'll check on that tomorrow.
Okay. We'll, we'll need to look in a bit, I mean, you know, you, that little, little pipe that don't do it, so, I mean, you know.
Uh, Mr. Dinges, did you have that road up that he was talking about?
Yeah, he's talking about the.
It's about Google Earth.
Uh, which one are you talking about? You talking about the bunker or? Bunker.
Bunker, right.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any reason a bus can't go down through there?
There's a couple of switchbacks where it might be a little bit tight. But back in the day, they used to send a shorter bus down through there.
See, all the way down Dry Creek. They ain't got no fire hydrant.
I was talking about the school bus situation there on, on that road.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of switchbacks, uh, towards, going towards the B line. That might be hard to navigate in a bus, but they might be able to. If they had a shorter bus, they might be able to navigate that pretty well. I'm sure they don't want to. I, I would, I would still, if Frida had the right idea, I'd still just ask the school about why they're not doing that, especially if there's five kids out through there. I, I'd like to understand why.
I know it's a bridge, it's a bridge on the other end there.
Yeah, you think it's because of the bridge they won't go through there?
On the other end of the bunking like that. But you know what? They could take that bus. Uh, that bus used to turn down that half before you get the bridge out there. By down the driveway, thirty years ago. And they can't take it now? Something wrong somewhere. Hey, they pay taxes just like me and you. They got a car, they eating. And every time we buy a gallon of gas, they pay someone tax. They go down your grocery store, they pay someone tax. They, they don't sell fat, they don't, not no beer. Charge them the same as do you. Then you pull up the gas station, they don't say, who you will, and do this, and do that, do that?
No, sir.
Huh? Did they ask you?
They said, no, sir, that's right, they don't ask you.
Don't ask you nothing. I, I look in a bit, we'll, we'll try to help them neighbor, okay?
Thank you, Johnny.
I hate to see my neighbor feed on them, okay?
I appreciate it.
I'll give you a call one day, and me and you'll ride around together.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizen expression? Thank you. Anybody else for citizen expression? Let's, uh, move on.
One thing I will, uh, is the lady with you made society, is that something we may pick up again next meeting, kind of discuss it a little bit, on her request?
I think the best thing for them is to keep an eye out for any kind of grants or anything that we could help them with. I don't know, that might be left up to the budget committee this year too, to see if we can find some. I'd like to have a, a specific need and a specific amount that they're looking for before I really considered any, anything.
I'll look with that DMV tag money and see if that was sent and where it went. Because they are getting that, and that's a couple of Spain Oogers a year worth.
Yeah.
Mr. Sken, I, uh, told Mrs. Nash that I would send her the link to the, uh, term and forest community fund. It's open for applications right now. That's administered through, uh, the nature conservancy and UVA wise for nonprofits to receive some money. So that would be a good thing. I think those applications are due in March, so we'll get into them and hopefully I'll pay them for the application again.
All right, we'll move on to new business then. Uh, MECC promise program update, y'all ready? Thank you all.
Good morning. Nice to have Chris Westover, the president of Mountain Empire Community College. It's good to see some of you again, good to see some of you for the first time.
This is Dr. Amy Greer, she's our vice president for institutional advancement and the foundation director. And I just, uh, before I get started, I was gonna give you a quick update on our enrollment. I think we got a PowerPoint somewhere, but before I do, I just, I had handed these handouts and I just kind of wanted to briefly explain them. We are, uh, of course lobbying for additional funding for the Virginia Community College system, which is the, the governing body for the Mountain Empire Community College. We are one of twenty-three community colleges in the system. We are part of Region One, Go Virginia Region One, and we're working regionally. Our regional priorities are in conjunction with Virginia Highlands Community College, Withville Community College, and Southwest Community College. That kind of makes up Region One. And our, um, our goals for talent pipeline expansion are really around healthcare, skilled trades, and transportation. And just some, just some information there to kind of help you in terms of what we're asking for overall statewide. It's a hundred and thirty-six, about, a hundred and thirty-six million dollar investment. Ten million of that would flow to our region. And it would create basically a hundred, eight hundred and fifty additional trained workers. Uh, thirteen thousand throughout the state, you can kind of see Region One there. There are, um, that's really kind of specific to our region and to Mountain Empire. So we are really focusing on healthcare, skilled trades, and transportation. There are three key points on this handout that I kind of wanted to just share with you. For every dollar that, uh, that supports a full-time, um, equivalent student at a public university in Virginia, universe, or community college students, VCCS students receive fifty-seven cents. So that begs the question, really, why are our students so less important than a university student? Eighty-one percent of our graduates stay in their local communities or in the, in the Commonwealth and contribute back to the economy. And our, our community colleges account for nearly half of the undergraduate enrollment in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So just some key points there to kind of help you. And, um, if you have questions or if you get questions about community colleges and their impact. And specifically related to Mountain Empire Community College, I'm gonna go through just a little enrollment update and some things that are happening at the college. And Dr. Greer's gonna give you a deep dive into the promise program that you have completely inhaled support, so thank you so much. Uh, I also want to give a shout out to Frida Starance, who is a, a local board member. And thank you for appointing her to our board. She has been a wonderful asset to the college and got beat up a little bit this morning. But I want to say that Frida does a great job, I know, for Scott County and for, and for Mountain Empire Community College too. Wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you, Dr. Westover, for that.
Absolutely, yes. She, she is a true asset to our college, we're appreciative. Uh, this, this is, it's kind of hard to see, so I've highlighted some big points here. But, uh, first I go through, our academic year starts in the fall of, uh, twenty twenty-four and goes through the summer of twenty twenty-five. So our academic year started last year, uh, or last fall. And last fall, our enrollment were up a little bit. There are kind of some points here, the, the overall full-time enrollment. I know we typically see FTE and think of full-time employee, but for us, full-time en- enrollment is an FTE. And that's when a student takes fifteen credits, uh, thirty throughout the year, fifteen per semester is an average. So thirty credits per year counts as like one FTE for the college. And that's really kind of what we're funded on. We're funded a little bit on headcount, but when we grow our FTE, that's really what keeps us, keeps our doors open and keeps us able to serve our communities. Uh, we were up about two point two six percent in terms of FTE in the fall. Five point one percent for dual enrollment, so our dual enrollment really saw an increase. And about two percent, a little over two percent for our regular, um, traditional enrollment. Our headcount, we received actually a hundred more students in traditional enrollment and fifty more, fifty-four more students in headcount, uh, in dual enrollment for an increase of almost five percent. And those two differ because oftentimes we'll have more students come to us, but sixty-two point four percent of our students are part-time. So they may not be taking a fifteen credit hour load, they may be taking twelve, nine. Eighty percent of our students work in some form, some form or fashion. So oftentimes our headcount and our total FTE don't really align. For the spring, on this next slide here, we, we're up. I think the weather impacted us a little bit in January, just in terms of getting those, those students who wait till the last minute waited a little bit too long this time. Uh, but we are still up, which is wonderful, given the weather and the impact that the weather had on our enrollment period. Uh, we're up nine FTE, just a little under one percent. For our regular enrollment, we're actually up about five percent in dual enrollment. Didn't affect our dual enrollment students as much. And one percent overall right now, and that's a point in time for the spring. We expect to end about two percent up. Uh, and then of course, our headcount, same thing, we were up a little over two percent in our headcount. Had fifty more students, almost fifty students more in regular enrollment this spring than we had the previous spring. What these numbers don't really show is our, is our workforce or our non-credit. I hate to call it non-credit because it's really workforce credit, um, or career credit. But those students who are in programs that are designed to go straight employment that, that culminate in an industry-recognized credential rather than a degree or a certificate. And we have about a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty of those every year that go through our college. And they're in power lineman programs, CDL programs, um, building and construction trades, some health sciences, CNA programs, and the like. Just to give you a little breakdown in terms of where students enroll and kind of where they come from. The dual enrollment piece is actually our largest breakup. But when you take dual enrollment, about seventy percent of those nine hundred and thirty-seven students are in arts and sciences. And about thirty percent are in a, um, a health science, industrial tech, or business technology program designed. And, and a lot of those students are taking the first two years of their four-year bachelor's degree, which is smart because it saves them, as you can see on that handout, about twenty-four thousand dollars over their college career. In terms of our makeup, about nineteen, almost, actually about eighteen percent of our students come from Scott County. Wise is our largest feeder, and it makes sense because we're located in the middle of Wise County. But that just kind of gives you a breakup of our enrollment by location. For the twenty twenty-four academic year, twenty twenty-five academic year won't end until the end of the summer. The average age of our student is twenty-three. If you take in dual enrollment out, that number jumps to about twenty-eight and a half. And that just gives you kind of an, uh, uh, an overview of our enrollment by race and gender. About two-thirds, almost two-thirds of our student population are female. That number is actually decreasing. We're, we're attracting, with our applied programs and trades programs, we're attracting more male students, which is a good thing. Um, so that might, a little, the blue on that second pile is starting to get, the light blue is getting a little bit smaller and the dark blue is getting a little bigger, which we're happy about. This next slide just kind of gives you, talk a little bit pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. Uh, the, the green line is our head, our FTE. And the red, or the blue line above is our, in, our headcount. And you can see the FTEs have kind of maintained a, a solid, even through the pandemic, and our, our headcount has kind of declined. And we're hopefully back on the incline right now in terms of getting more students in through our doors. Just in terms of how students take courses, pre-pandemic, we had, um, less than half of our courses were, were internet-based or distance learning. Um, and a little over half or around half were in-person. And then we had some mix for like in-person night. Hybrid is where they may come to campus four or five times during the semester and then do online, a mix. And computer video is where it's completely online and it's, but they have to have some type of, um, some type of media experience also. That has really shifted, as you can see here, post-pandemic for fall of twenty twenty-four, over fifty percent, almost sixty, almost two-thirds of our enrollment, um, are online. And students, that, that brings, it's good, it's bad, it, it sometimes hurts kind of campus life and the population on campus. In, in terms of student success though, the, that shift, we've seen students maintain. Um, oftentimes when students go from in-person to web-based, they don't do as well. And we've seen, uh, not really a decline in, in grades or in performance by students in that shift. So that's positive. And another, um, big piece of that web is our dual enrollment. So if a student can't, um, we do enrollment, we share the faculty members with our high schools. And if a high school has a, a faculty member who can be credentialed to teach, uh, a college-level course, then we'll use that high school instructor. And if they don't, then the student has the opportunity to come to Mountain Empire and, and take the class online with a, with a college instructor. And so that really has increased our web enrollment as well, because a lot of students take advantage of that. And with that, I am going to shift, and then we will hold questions till the end. Turn it over to Dr. Greer to dive into the promise program.
Well, good morning. Glad to be with you this morning. Um, I just want to mention too, I'm a Scott County resident. And following Hurricane, Mr. Arns and Mr. Dinges came to my house because I had pretty significant property damage. And so I thank them for what they do, and very appreciative to be here with you this morning. Um, if you're not familiar with our promise program, it is offered to high school graduates, beginning with the high school graduating class of twenty twenty-three. And, um, it provides tuition coverage only for high school graduates if they meet the following criteria. Okay, they must maintain a two-point-oh GPA while they're in college. They need to be continuously enrolled for up to two years for seventy-two credit hours. And what that means is some students come to us with dual enrollment credits, as Dr. Westover mentioned. You can take up to seventy-two credit hours, which is the equivalent of an associate's degree. We don't let them go beyond that. They must reside in our service area and provide proof of residency. So this program is not extended to Tennessee residents, even if they attend Scott County schools. They must complete the federal financial aid form, which is a requirement. This is a last-dollar scholarship for students. We need to make sure that they have qualified for all available assistance to them, both federal and state, before we kick in with additional scholarship money and your contributions. They must also complete a scholarship application annually. They must also complete a scholarship application annually. We have about a hundred and sixty private scholarships established at MECC, and a student from Scott County may qualify for one of those scholarships. We would apply that first before using PROMIS program funds. Something that's not listed on this screen that's also a requirement, we try very hard. It's a requirement. Not all students do this. We require students to write a thank you note. We think that is the least they can do. If they're receiving scholarship funds, often through donors who have given to contribute to their education, they ought to write that donor a thank you for that investment in their education. So last year, we came to you, it was the first year of the program, and we were concerned because we didn't have the number of students, I think, qualifying for PROMIS. They may have graduated from a Scott County school, but they didn't complete those steps that I just talked about for whatever reason. I'm pleased to come back to you and say we've gotten those percentages up and the number of students or percentage of students that are coming to us from high school and are graduating and qualifying for the PROMIS program. I think we've got a little work to do at Rock Cove, and I think at least Mr. Steen, your supervisor, and Mr. Bickers have agreed to visit a couple of the Scott County high schools during our financial aid workshops and encourage students to take advantage of this opportunity. Really, we can go into detail about this, but I think it it sometimes it's a parent issue, and we can talk further about that. Sometimes it's just a matter of completing federal financial assistance forms, which can be an obstacle, but we do help them in that. So just very quickly, some of the things that we do to provide students with opportunities to complete those necessary steps to qualify for the program. As a college, we have career coaches that work in Gate City, Twin Springs, and Rock Cove at least one day per week, if not two days. But those career coaches are assisting your guidance counselors with the basic responsibilities of helping encourage students to get college-ready through completing their FAFSA, completing the coursework needed to enter college. So we do do that. We also hold regular financial aid workshops. It's free to parents. We do that during the day, sometimes at night as well. We encourage parents to come with their student because students' financial aid is often based on their parents' income. And they don't have that information, they really need their parents there with them. Okay? We also provide wraparound services for our student students that are enrolled at Mountain Empire. That includes tutoring. If they qualify and they have an emergency need, such as a housing issue, a broken-down car, can't pay for their internet, we'll help with that. We have money set aside annually for emergency student needs. We have a food pantry, we have a clothes closet. We do everything that we can to make sure that students are successful, and we encourage them to take advantage of those resources. So the other thing that we do specifically for high school students, if they have not completed those steps that I talked about, we send a postcard to their home address. We hope that gets the parents' attention, but we have on there, you haven't completed your FAFSA, you haven't turned in this particular form. So we let them know by mail, as well as multiple emails, that you've got a few more steps before August first in order to qualify. Does anyone have any questions before I go further? Okay? So this is just a breakdown of your students that are attending Mountain Empire from Scott County. In twenty twenty-four, let's just look at Gate City High School. We had approximately a hundred and forty-one high school graduates. Twenty-two of those students came to Mountain Empire. That number would actually be a little bit higher because it does not include our workforce classes, which may be CDL and power lineman programs. Those are quite successful programs, too. Okay? Out of that twenty-two that came to us for credit classes, sixteen qualified for the PROMIS program. They did all the things that they were supposed to do in order to qualify. And then, from there, in the spring of twenty twenty-five, we had nine returning students. Okay? So let's talk about some of the reasons we have a decrease between fall of twenty twenty-four and the spring twenty twenty-five. What we learned from looking at our graduates from twenty twenty-three that were enrolled in the PROMIS program is that about twenty-two percent actually have completed within that first semester or first first year their certificate program or their associate's degree. They may have completed dual enrollment courses, just enough that they don't have to take a full year in order to graduate and go on and transfer to a four-year university. For the rest of them, some of those students drop below full-time, okay? And we require as part of the PROMIS program, if you're a high school graduate entering Mountain Empire, we want you to take classes full-time because we want you to finish in two years or less. That's really important, okay? And then twenty-six percent drop below that two-point-oh GPA. In college, we do expect students to work, right? That's a little different than high school sometimes. They have a hard time adjusting. And hopefully, they'll come back as adults and maybe re-enter and try again. But sometimes, students do struggle with that first semester in college. Okay? For whatever reason, fifteen percent of those students didn't complete the scholarship application for the second year. We're we can work on that to remind students over and over again, and we do, but we'll take responsibility for that. Mr. Steen and I have talked about, sometimes you can't force a student to do the things that they need to do. That's just part of growing up and being an adult. Okay? So two years ago, I came to you and asked for money from Scott County. The approximate amount that we thought a student or the group of students from Scott County would have to pay out-of-pocket for tuition coverage for high school graduates, we estimated that to be about forty-three thousand, based on the last three years of data that we had. Since that time, since we implemented, we've only spent about twenty-four thousand of your money. Here's how we're able to do that. When we initially announced the PROMIS program, we applied for a grant through the Ann and Jean World Foundation, and that grant provided us with a gift of seven hundred and fifty-thousand dollars, which was given to us over a three-year period. Instead of spending that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we put it in the bank. We have an investment manager that manages all of the foundation funds, and we only spend the interest from that investment, okay? Only spending the interest means that this program will be here forever and ever. And so we had to have a little bit of time to build that interest, to have enough money generated in income each year so that we didn't have to come back to you and ask for additional money. And luckily, we've been able to do that, right? We've had an increase in enrollment, we've seen that already. We know that more students are attending Mountain Empire. Our goal for this program, number one from day one, we lag behind. Our region lags behind the rest of the state in educational attainment. And if we don't do something to fix that, it is difficult for our region to compete economically. So it's really important that we have workers, but it's more important that we have skilled workers, right? So and that's what your industries, your commodities, your VFPs are looking for, skilled workers. We're here to train them to do that. So we've spent that twenty-five thousand. We know that we're going to have some interest available next year to help fund the PROMIS program. I'm going to make a request today, if you would consider, to look at maybe an additional ten thousand dollars that will not only help fund that program, just ten thousand dollars, not the full forty-three. Ten thousand dollars would help fund this program, but also make available, hopefully, some additional funds for dual enrollment students or adults returning to to college. Really, it's our adults that struggle the most in paying for college sometimes because they're working. And when you're working, you don't qualify for the federal financial aid, right? That's based on your poverty level. It's our adults that are having to pay out-of-pocket. So we'd like to create a fund that would assist Scott County adults returning to college. We can work out the details. We have a lot of scholarships already in place that assist Scott County students, but some additional funding specifically for adult students would go a long way to assist, I think, in raising that educational attainment level. I think that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I'm sure Dr. Westover would, too.
Yeah, just as a parent that has that will hopefully one day go to Mountain Empire or somewhere else, if they can make it, what's the best thing I can do to prepare my kids for this? And what's the best thing I can do to to help them when they get old enough to apply for programs like this?
Well, while they're in school, probably honestly, my my suggestion would be make sure that they take as much math and English as they can, because those are the two big barriers to success in college. Math and English are the two big ones. Encourage them to take as much dual enrollment as they can, or as they're comfortable taking, because and they're still they're still students, they're still, you know, they're still children, and you want them to have that experience. And so, you know, there's there can be too much college, and I've seen some high school students who are very, very motivated, who who sometimes bite off more than really that they can chew. But dual enrollment is a great option. And I would say really kind of go with your student when you go to college visits, when you talk about enrollment, and and recognize that most students who are eighteen-years-old are gonna need their parents' income information if they want to apply for scholarships or to receive any type of federal financial aid. And oftentimes, that's easier for the parent to navigate than the student, because the student hasn't been paying bills and doesn't understand always the finances of the home.
One thing I might add is something I find with our students, they've lived here all their life for the most part, they really don't understand the jobs that are available right here in our county or even across the state line. They can stay here and make a really good living, but they don't know, they might drive by VFP or commodities every day and not understand what's going on in those places. So, you know, I think as a region, we need to do a better job of selling to to our young people the tremendous opportunities that are available in healthcare and manufacturing. It used to be in my generation that you were told to go to college, right? And you didn't really have a plan for what to do. You just hope you kind of had a job at the end. I want our students to realize there are really good jobs available here. It may not be that four-year degree that they need. A power lineman student can finish in about fifteen weeks and make, what, between forty, fifty thousand dollars to start? And if they're willing to travel, they can make six figures. So understand, we support four-year education, absolutely, but you can do great things going to community college.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's another question. Anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. We appreciate y'all and your doing.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes that. Need an update? Mr. Allen Sumner?
Hey.
How you doing this morning?
Doing okay. I will, I was thinking, as they were speaking for Mountain Empire there, your question you asked, I have a daughter that attended Lehigh, and at the conclusion of her graduation, she had seventy-eight college credits with the dual credit system. Went to, she's at University of Tennessee, and because she took all those classes, she only had one basic class that she had to take in her time there. And spring, I'm proud she's going to graduate with a degree in architecture, a minor in business, and minor in interior design, which if she had not taken all that at Mountain Empire, she would have never had all that that time to do. And I went to Mountain Empire years ago for preliminary engineering program, too. So I started out there as well, so just to give them a little plug as well. Okay, so y'all have had a long morning and everything, and I'm going to try not to be too long myself. I feel like I'm family with you as much as I've been here now. So one thing I wanted to do is while I'm doing this, can y'all sit there? Let's stand up and y'all stand up and stretch a second. Come on, stand up. Y'all need to stand up and stretch for just a second.
I don't need to.
I owe you.
Yeah.
I think the board over yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was a good present, didn't it?
It was a present. Yeah, just give me a chance to stretch there.
I was trying to do it.
Okay, so I can I can be pretty pretty brief, really, on going over what I have for you. Obviously, if you've been on planet Earth and in this area in the last month or so, you know that everything's been pretty well dominated with snow removal. And so that's been the big thing that we've had going on. We've, in Scott County alone, just done some rough calculations with contractors, our employees, and with our wage employees that come in and work push snow for us. I think that we've probably been around six thousand man-hours in the snow season since, like, you know, right after Christmas and through month of January. We had ten events in January that we worked. And I think it all that, there was like about a week and a half solid, and we've probably got about fifteen, sixteen snow days that we've had to work there with that. So as we as we always know, and I'm always thankful for Ms. Peggy reminding me, that we have gravel roads that we have to deal with. And so there, this time of the year brings a lot of challenge to us. And so I gave you a list that's there. These are roads that we've had either come, some of them, Mr. Steen does a good job communicating to us things that he gets in. Had some from Ms. Glover's as well that's come in, and a few others that have come in through work orders. And so if you will notice, we've, in the last week or so, turned a lot of work off on doing maintenance and putting gravel on the roadways. And we've been getting, you know, a lot of work orders come in. People say that the roads are, you know, are muddy and and that kind of thing. So I I do want to kind of explain just a little bit about our mindset in dealing with the gravel roads in this time of the year. So when when they're frozen, like when the dig freeze happened, about all we can do is put the the stone on it on top of them to try to provide a little traction that's in there with it, to try to help with vehicles. A lot of folks say, well, why don't you just go and put, go ahead and just put the stunt replacement stone right on top of the ice, and then, you know, it'll be there when it thaws out. Well, the problem with that is that if you notice, you know, about anything like that is out in your yards or anything, is that when that thaw occurs, and then you've got the pressure, the traffic, that the stone that we put there, it just pushes it right down into the the surface. So we lose a lot of the benefit for it with that. And then you've got the potholes that are there as well, and so, you know, we get requests like road needs to be bladed, it needs stung. Well, honestly, folks, we have to let those roads dry out some before we can really make a lot of benefit to them. And I know that that causes a lot of pain for folks to have to kind of endure some, you know, muddy conditions and things there like that that you deal with that are, you know, and things there like that, that you deal with, that are, you know, not what any of us like. But we really are kind of just spinning our wheels with it if we just don't wait and let some of these roads dry out. So, then we had, you know, a couple of inches of rain last week as well. So, we've kind of had, if we've not had rain, we've had snow. But we are getting just a little bit of a break, and so we are trying to do what we can to shape them up, and we will continue to do that. And please know again, as spring gets closer and things start drying up even more, we do have plans that we will, you know, work further on these roads. We really can't make the hard cut with the motor grader like we would like to make on there. Otherwise, they would red up, and then it'd just be like tire tracks like you'd see in a field that's going, go through there. So, that's kind of what we're doing. We will be, you know, trying to work on spot locations where we can, and then do more maintenance to them as we get toward this spring. I will mention just a couple of things. Elton here is on Lucy Road. We've completed work there.
I got a phone call from Mr. Kessler yesterday, and he wanted me to tell you, he appreciates everything you guys have been doing out there.
Thank you.
He was very pleased. He said he's been trying for years and years and years to get those trees cut down.
Okay, all right.
He said, "Thank you."
Thank you. Then, also, the low-water bridges, Mr. Skene, we did go in and remove the debris, and then the rain that just happened brought more debris back. And so, we're sending them back in in order to try to remove that debris that just happened there. So, that just kind of occurred, but we are working on taking care of that. On the front sheet of the page, I'm gonna go down to the next thing, and that's the rural rustics. Hopefully, you know, we're seeing that we're approaching, you know, despite of what the groundhog says, hopefully the end winter will be right around the corner. And then we have the three rural rustics that are on the schedule. They are currently in all the environmental clearing process, and we're hoping that those, we've got March on there, but I'm gonna say spring is what our plan is to get those started. And just for a reminder, the Ann Cooper, Ann Good Cooper Road, that's one point six miles of roadway that we'll be constructing there. The Eaton Hill is point five six. Horton Summit is point five six. And then we have one of the phases of Obie's Creek that will be in the fall. Now, these projects will probably run all summer. I don't know whether or not they will get the asphalt surface on them or not, but it will be our goal on the three that's listed in March to try to get them at least to have a tar and chip surface on it to lay through the winter, and then pave through, then the following spring, if, you know, in the worst-case scenario. So, in other words, we will, our goal will be to get those folks out of the dust and mud by the end of the construction season. Okay, on the backside, it's just the information on the work orders, just to share with you a little bit. I asked Eric that's with me, he does my report, and does well getting that information on the last minute. I asked him to put the January information on there. So, kind of to show you with where that we're dealing with, like letting the, you know, roads dry out and then try to address them where we can, and from October through December, need gravel added. We had fifty-four work orders there with that. There are still twelve that are open there with that, that part of this whole process of them needing, you know, to dry up and get more attention later. And then there are eleven that have come in in January. So, as you see, there's Skene, we've got like twenty-three out there. You may get calls or whatever. But hopefully you can kind of, if you do, you can explain to folks kind of what our strategy is that they're with that. Because we do talk to folks, but sometimes, as you know, they, you know, naturally want it now, you know, instead of later. So, that's quite a bit of the work that we have that's going on, that, working on the gravel roads. We also, as we can, we're working on the mainline roads, getting potholes patched as we can, trying to do a little tree work as possible too. But the emphasis has certainly been the snow weather. And then now, when we get a chance, we do have a great big part of our workforce working on the gravel roads. So, with that, just see if you have anything else that you want to mention or add to our list, and we will take it and check into it. Oh, Mr. Manus, one thing, excuse me, one thing from your discussion last week and in our prior discussion. The entire, the speed limit of that zone down there in Duffield's gonna be added into our whole review of that area down there through the coming in the Duffield, by the school and everything.
That's good to hear. Also brought up, while we were up in Richmond, the possibility, we had some sidewalks from Thomas Village out to HNG. Folks have worn path through there already, and so it's a natural path that's kind of pumped up, so.
And that's something that probably have to kind of live through for some kind of grant or something to come through there.
I do understand it, but I just want to make sure we bring that up to you and make you aware.
Yeah, I'm aware of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The federal project, pavement project for Devil's Bathtub Road to High Knob in that area, is that still, what status on that?
It's still on the status. We are, we have some, we're still working with trying to get some clearance with the Division of Forestry on cutting trees. And so, we've got our environmental folks trying to step that up and see where it is. As soon as I know more, I will let you know by email or a call, give you an update on that. Okay?
The other thing, I want to remind the board that Webb Road, which he's got on his list here, that you put gravel out, that is a road that was asked to be abandoned at our last meeting. And we determined there was emergency vehicle usage needs for that area. So, they have corrected that and added gravel, so appreciate that.
Anything else?
I got a phone call from Mr. Hobbs last night. The New Herlin Church Lane, is there a possibility, I know you went up there, you worked on it, but you did patches of gravel. Is there a possibility that we can gravel the whole entire section of that eventually?
That's something that, yeah, we will look at. I'm not gonna commit to, because again, we've got resources and things of the overall need. But that, that's what I was talking about when I said that we are, right now, we're just trying to address tunnel spots and everything, and kind of get things kind of rough back in. And then, we've got a lot that's like that, that we probably will do, you know, some more. But again, we will, you know, we kind of prioritize that on, you know, on traffic volumes and things of that nature to go to, you know, see how much, you know, balance out better resources.
I believe Ms. Toss had a question.
Yeah, I could say, just put the gravel in the tracks, you know, put a board in the middle.
No.
I mean, if it don't fall, you know.
I know, it's just too hard to do. We just don't have the equipment to do that.
Oh, it just takes a board to put it in.
Yeah.
And like she said, you know, there are patches, but, okay.
We'll try to keep you taken care of until, what, two thousand and twenty-nine, okay?
Oh, no, it's supposed to be two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay, well then, I'm sorry, I don't have any pride in being, okay. All right, two thousand and twenty-seven.
And I have one more thing. This may blow your mind, but Mr. Hobbs said fifty-one years ago, his grandmother, Faye Hobbs, put that road, which was Route six ninety-four at the time, on a six-year plan. Fifty-one years ago.
Ten years ago.
And nothing was done about it. So, I know that's mind-blowing and all this, but what, why was it taken off of the six-year plan? Is there a reason why?
I don't know that far back, but I do, you know, that's a little, well, no, I was born then, but anyway.
That would've been nineteen seventy-three.
Yeah, okay, well, I was around. I was around. Okay. So, anyway, the thing that I can tell you with experience now, having been in this now for about thirty-six years and around it, is that there was once a time when, if a person came in and they wanted their road on the six-year plan, then the easy political decision was, we will put you on the six-year plan. You know, you were on the plan, but there was no funding. And so, as like I've said there, I think before, I was in, I worked, this job I had in Russell County back in the nineties, and there was a period of time that every gravel road in Russell County was on the six-year plan. And so, they were just put on there, and so somebody could say, okay, I want to be on the six-year plan. Well, you're on the six-year plan, but it wasn't realistic. So, in mid-two thousands, around two thousand and eight to ten, the leadership that we had in Richmond said, we're gonna have a six-year plan that is realistic and one that can be funded. And so, that was a result of, at that time, many roads had to be taken off because there was simply not the funding. So, what we asked to do when that happened, and Ms. Starnes, you know, we've worked on it here, we, even in the time, we had a priority listing at the county level that we went through, and we would put them on that list, and then, once we went through and had those funded, built, whatever, and then when funds were available, then we would pull from that list and then insert that road in the other plan. So, that's kind of how that's kind of come about of trying to make it. But it was just a plan. It wasn't functional.
Okay.
Mr. Sumner?
Six-year plan, thirty came in, bet on thirty-five-year plan. It ain't done yet. You know what I have to do? Well, my house right, Bunkers, they had to write Crumadale, Crumadale. Very dense, you get that road there, huh? That's the name of the bunker. That's where they got it, huh? Well, my, I might have to write Crump and get the bird now, because I don't mind. Don't lie to me, son. Don't lie to me. Well, you have to take a tow truck full, you have, everyone else, that's uncalled for. That's uncalled for. That should've been picked a long time ago. And ain't nobody's getting it, and that, I know, man. Always good. What the deal is in that, son? Tell me something, tell me something.
Well, that road just is not on the six-year plan.
Hey, I used to work speed off, you know.
I know, I remember.
And I tried everything I could, just trying to get it fixed and that, that. You don't want that, they throw down the bug every time I done one, just right now. You throw them down the bug. I don't like it thrown down the bug, son. It hurts. And that road, got more crack on it, and they went and paved it, and they ain't got no cracking tile on it, but they went and had to pave it. What the deal, though? Look, look, come up to the car for me sometime. You haul me a six-year plan and that, and that. I'm getting tired of that six-year plan. That's a bloody five-year plan.
I understand.
You what? Talk to me, man. I think that could just work better.
I think that you all understand the process that we use, so that's all I can say at this point. Okay, y'all got anything else for me?
Have they ever done anything there on the Antler Spring Road? Went up through there around Christmas time. I seen where they put a couple loads of rock on it. I don't know what they done during the snow. I talked to anybody out there.
Well, they did work on it some last week, but that's another one that there'll be further work done on later.
There are road down there. It's a driveway there on sixty-five, or you hit the Mill Creek.
Okay.
What it is, they don't gravel the driveway. I don't think it's ever had any gravel on it. And the water runs down off the hill on the Highway sixty-five in the curve. And the other day, I was down there, I guess it was last Friday, and the water was running across the road, and I've decided the road where the road was tilted out about two hundred feet, and it was running by across the road there for about sixty feet. And that was from on your lane plus halfway across. They don't have a tile with the driveway for it to run down the ditch. It's been like that ever since the driveway's been built, I'll say twenty, twenty years or longer. And it's kind of a road hazard. It's kind of in the curve, and I've called it in before. Like, nobody's ever done nothing about it, and I call it again.
We'll get it checked. You know, normally the driveway tiles are the responsibility of the property owner, but we'll get it checked in too.
Okay. And they've done, they've done a pretty good job this fall, putting extra gravel in places and this, that, and the other. I've seen y'all really been working on it, considering the trees that we've had and the road thing. I'd have to say y'all, not about as good as you do with the manpower you've got.
Thank you. I'm very proud of our folks. They've worked a lot of hours and hard, and it's, you know, a lot of safety issues goes into that too, and thankful that we've not really had anybody, you know, had any injuries and.
You're cutting trees is a dangerous job.
Antler Spring Road thing, but Mr. Sabatino has about a turnaround spot there on his property for the bus to turn. And we've spoken about the maybe improving that green tile, standing it out. It's a hazard, I think, at this point with the bus turning and to drop off, so if you could, check that out.
We do. Like I said, we've just, we've been trying to focus on just, you know, maintenance things now, and, you know, get it, go to higher weather, try to work on some of these things. Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Conch's Chapel out there, it's got a soft spot in it on the dirt side.
Okay.
Coming from the high school side. Of course, I'm sure there are a lot of soft spots on a lot of these dirt roads. And I seen there last night, tomorrow we're supposed to get a week's worth of rain, rain every day to next Thursday, so.
Okay. And we'll keep, we will, and to see if we don't get everything taken care of now, I mean, we're gonna keep digging after it best that we can.
Y'all been digging, I'll have to say that, I mean, I thank you, okay?
Thank you, sir. Y'all need anything else? Okay, then, let's see, it's February, then probably come back around May or June, okay? I guess next trip I'll be, we will have to be thinking about the freedom, coming months will be updating the plan. So, I always am kind of right at the last minute of getting that done. So, if we can try to get that accomplished a little earlier, what we're gonna do would be helpful.
I'll have them start that process in March, if it's done ahead of time.
All right, thank you.
One thing I did, I noticed you were gonna. Uh, one thing I did, uh, I noticed you were gonna, I think, talk about smart scale applications.
I'm not speaking, she's going to go over.
Well, I just wanted to get your opinion on a couple, and I know there's a process. The Clinchport, uh, intersection with, uh, twenty-three, do you think that's a potential project?
I think that that is a good project, that's a good realignment. When we've had discussions about it, I, it's, um, it is, it's just a matter is she, I'm sure she would touch on, um, how these projects score, there are a lot of good projects, but the scoring and everything is what becomes the factor.
The other thing is Highway seventy-two in Flatwoods, you know, the switchbacks.
Yeah.
Would that be a potential smart scale?
I think that one's gonna be difficult for it to ever score very well.
Okay, thank you.
Cause the economic impacts and things that's there that you have to score on.
Those are high percentages too.
Yeah. Okay, folks, good to see you all.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good.
Next, we're gonna review the VDOT smart scale application. Can we do this right quick, that way we got all our VDOT stuff off the plate? Sorry.
I'll just have a couple slides if want me long.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so our twenty-twenty-four application was US twenty-three and fifty-eight, oh, I'm sorry, we'll go back. This was from twenty-twenty, this was our application that we put in at US twenty-three and fifty-eight intersection in Duffield. Um, the project is dual left turn lanes. Uh, if you're going northbound on twenty-three, uh, you know, we have one turn lane going left on the fifty-eight now. Traffic backs up there outside of the turn lane and it's very dangerous during the high-volume, uh, traffic times in Duffield. So, this project, uh, will also, um, correct the right turn to Natural Tunnel Parkway. Uh, there'll be some improvements done there as well. And also some improvements where you turn in to the, I believe it's the Marathon McDonald's station. So, some of those turns will be fixed, and they're gonna install a new traffic signal there. And the estimated award of this project was four million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand seventy-five dollars. And, uh, we should be getting construction in a couple of months with the estimated completion date of six, three, twenty-six. So, look for this one coming anytime, um, and that was applied for in twenty-twenty and successfully funded. So, I think that'll be a good project with all the traffic going to the industry in Duffield and the schools there. Um, hopefully that'll help with congestion at that intersection.
Uh, when you come out there at Natural Tunnel, getting on US twenty-three, it's no longer gonna have a median strip, you're gonna turn right and go.
Different project.
That's a different case.
This is at McDonald's in Duffield.
The one at McDonald's, okay?
Correct.
Yes, okay, I thought they was both together.
Mm-mm, they're separate. So, in twenty-twenty-two, we applied for US twenty-three at Chapel Street and Railroad Crossing improvements. This is in Weber City. This project is also tied to a metropolitan, um, project with the Kingsport MPO. And that's gonna correct the businesses from the Tennessee State Line to, um, the Riverside property. There's just the free in and out of all those businesses. So, it's gonna clean, the MPO project is gonna clean up those entrances and exits. So, it's gonna make that quarter safer. And then, this part in Weber City, um, is gonna start preliminary engineering later this year. Uh, this project was funded successfully at seven million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh, this was our twenty-twenty-two smart scale application. Uh, the two projects will be done simultaneously, um, so that'll, that'll cause a lot of congestion and havoc in that section of Weber City to the state line while this is going on. But I think it'll be, uh, a much, much safer, um, for our citizens traveling that way. And it'll be a good project. Um, so, watch for that one, that's the next one coming up. And then, for the twenty-twenty-four applications, we were not successful with the US twenty-three Natural Tunnel Parkway improvements. Uh, we scored really low, uh, we had a one-point-one score. We ranked eleven out of twenty in the district and ranked a hundred and ninety-nine out of two hundred and seventy statewide. The estimated cost of this project was twelve million dollars. So, we will be tweaking this application for the smart scale round that will be open next year. Um, like Mr. Sumter said, economic development is a high-scoring, um, piece for these projects. And where this one is, you know, kind of out of Duffield, a couple of miles, you know, you don't have a lot of economic development there. So, it's gonna be harder to get that scoring up. But this will be our focus, I guess if it's the board's decision, if it would be the focus going forward. But this is VDOT's recommendation that we tweak this and reapply next year in the next round.
This one's a high priority for me, there's been too many fatalities there.
And we really thought that would make it a good project that would score because we do have a fatality, a lot of wrecks, uh, that data was all included. But, um, VDOT will help us, um, try to improve that project.
Economic impacts of that project, uh, would tourism be economic?
It would have to be something new, that's not. They want, I know when we did the Weber City project, they want like COs and things that have been within the last, say, six months or a year. So, unless something new was in the natural tunnel area, we couldn't just say it was because of tourism.
Could we count the reopening of Redstone?
That might be a good one, but you know, when we did this project, they weren't open at the time.
I mean, every, every little bit.
And also, they, they just recently got the money for, um, to redo the pool and everything at Natural Tunnel.
The pool would be a good connection.
More traffic coming to go that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if the pool is open in twenty-twenty-six, then that would be a good connection to put in with that application.
Good, good, good.
So, I just wanted to give you an update on those because I did get, uh, our score and things last week. Um, I've got a, a sheet that shows our scoring more in depth, if you would like for me to email that to you, I'd be glad to do that.
All right, and let's take a break for, uh, about fifteen minutes, be back here at eleven-thirty-five, please.
And we'll start with the ratifying of the AEP letter of support.
That letter is on your tablet. I did call the board before I sent the letter, they needed it in advance of today's meeting for their grant. So this is the same letter that you looked at previously and it just needs to be ratified to make official.
Do I hear a motion to ratify this letter?
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Everyone vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One thing on AEP, um, understand that the House of Delegates has passed a bill. Well, recommended a bill to the Senate to reduce the rates, make it more competitive with Dominion and others in the area.
Yep.
So that's moving forward. Y'all have a feel for how it's gonna go or?
Yeah. I think it'll pass. It had pretty well, um.
Bipartisan.
Bipartisan and overwhelming support. I think that one will go through.
Yeah, and I think the, I think the governor will support it as well. Uh, resolution approving equipment lease purchase of a 2025 packer truck.
This is also on your tablet. Um, our financing company needed this resolution for their records. Our new packer truck is ready to be delivered once these documents are received. Um, I chose the leasing option to pay the first one upfront because we do have the money in the budget this year for that. And then the remaining four payments will be distributed over the next four years. Um, so this was in the budget, um, under the vehicle replacement line item for Public Works. Um, we have a certain amount of money each year and we fit our trucks into that. They're on a rotation with a chart that goes out many years. That way we're not having to come and ask for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one specific budget year. We can, um, look at those going out in the future and budget our money the best we can for those trucks. So it was time for, um, a 2025 purchase. Uh, we've got, um, a 2020 one purchase that's getting ready to roll off, so we're good on our payments to stay in our bu- within budget. So I just need this resolution approved to move forward.
Do I have a motion to approve, uh, this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, everybody, uh, vote my way and say aye.
Aye.
Name? Um, next is approve the fiscal year 2026 budget calendar.
This is also on your tablet. Um, this is my best guess of how the, uh, budget, um, will proceed throughout its process for fiscal year twenty six. Um, requests for funding from the department are due February the fourteenth. Um, at that point, we'll start working on a draft budget. Um, the plan is for the budget committee to meet in March and then bring their recommendation, uh, to the full board after that. So of course the budget calendar is fluid. It can move, um, based on how the general assembly session, uh, processes and does things throughout their cycle. Um, but this is a best guess of how everything can flow this year. It's a short session, so we should be able to get it, uh, finalized pretty quick.
Any questions, comments on this? Any motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget calendar.
I'll second.
Everybody, uh, vote my way and say aye.
Aye.
Name? Alright, next is, uh, something I can do. Uh, appoint two members to the fiscal year, uh, year 2026 budget committee. Um, this year I'm going to appoint myself and Stephanie Haddington, uh, to that committee to work on the budget.
Thank you. Happy to do that.
Appreciate it. Alright, next, uh, building code official, zoning and flood ordinance administrator, Tim Williams.
Yes, I just wanted to give recognition to David Gilmer, uh, who served as our building official and zoning and flood ordinance administrator for his sixteen years of service. Uh, we did have him a retirement lunch in, in January. Um, he's been a big asset to the county for many years and will miss his knowledge in that department. Uh, Tim Williams has been working with David for a little over a year as a building inspector and Tim has been selected to fill that role, uh, after David's retirement. So I just wanted to let the board know that Tim Williams will be, uh, continue, well, he was appointed by me in January, so he will be, uh, moving forward as the building code official, zoning and floodplain ordinance administrator.
Comments on that? Update from Richmond meetings. I guess that's me. I'm gonna go down here to the to the podium, so I can actually talk to y'all, walk you through what all the deal, how we do.
Let's see if this works. Hey, I can hear myself out here. Uh, so, you know, uh, every year we have the Southwest Virginia Legislative Session, a number of supervisors go to that. Last year there were, uh, quite a few. I think four of us went? Four, five?
Five.
Five, okay. Uh, went to that. Uh, this year only, uh, myself and Frida, uh, from the Board of Supervisors got to go along with, uh, Lynn Fensler, uh, John Gilgore, and Roger Frazier from the EDA. Um, so, uh, the Southwest Virginia Legislative Session is a time for all the counties in Southwest Virginia to show up in Richmond and show off what you've done in the past year and get support for upcoming projects. It's kind of a two-way street, right? Um, it's a little bit of us hunting for money and it's a little bit of, of them asking, well, what have you done since we gave you your last bit of money? Um, and, you know, as, as usual, all these organizations have plenty of money, uh, right up until the time you ask for it. So we'll, we'll see how we do with getting some of these grants, but we went to numerous places. First, uh, and foremost, Virginia Housing and DHCD. Um, Virginia Housing, uh, serves homebuyers, renters, and homeowners and business partners. They provide low-cost loans. Uh, DHCD is, you know, dedicated to making a prosperous community. Um, there was a lot of talk about continuing to grow the workforce and I'm glad the folks from MECC were here today because they're gonna be integral partners in this, uh, expansion. And we talked a lot about expanding, uh, childcare opportunities in Scott County and to support working families. As you know, this has kind of been a pet project of mine that I've been trying to get off the ground here in Scott County and I'm pleased to say we are making some progress, but I want to make sure we make progress for the whole county, not just a little bit here and there. So I'm still gonna continue to work on that and, and pull all the levers I can there. There are plenty of funding opportunities there, planning grants, capacity building grants, community impact grants, all kinds of, uh, grants for either studying what could be done or should be done in some of our communities that actually planning out, you know, housing developments and, and things like that, so. Uh, it's a, we're gonna look into applying for a few of those and see what we can come up with in the next, uh, year or so. Wireless build-out. I know this has been a big subject in Scott County, right? Uh, every, I've been informed, um, that hopefully, uh, tentatively, every house in Scott County is gonna have fiber internet connectivity by the end of this year. Um, and that is huge. No other county in Virginia has done that, right? No other municipality I don't think has done that, fiber to the door for every single citizen. But we got fiber, what about cell phones? You know, I can have gig-speed internet inside, but if I step outside my door and walk around on the farm, I don't have, I don't have cell service. So, um, since we are so far along on our fiber build-out, um, there is a push, uh, to use federal lead money for wireless build-outs. So that is construction of the towers, uh, construction of anything that might need to, uh, be done in, in that respect. And that's something that Scott County could greatly benefit from. Um, but that is just a push for that money. That is not nothing that is material as of yet. They're going this budget year to talk with the feds and see what they can do to use that money. So that is a lead on, you know, some money that we could use to build out cell towers here 'cause I know there are a lot of communities that are underserved for that. Uh, next we went to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, you know. BDC has been a partner in, uh, keeping Scott County strong in, in tourism. It's, it's been a strong year, uh, for tourism, right? Spinning is up across, uh, a lot of categories and there have been a lot of visitors coming to, uh, our region from Kentucky and Tennessee, obviously, as well as across the world. Um, you know, we had the, uh, the Carter Fold celebration this year. That brought in a lot of people. I think John said their bookings were up triple or double. I don't have that on my slide, but that's a, that's a fun fact. Um, so, um, I, I was very proud to see that and the more people need to get up there and see the car fold. Um, there's a couple of bills coming up for expanded funding. Um, it's HB nineteen oh one, SB nine twenty seven, it's a Virginia Sports Tourism Fund. And when I, when I think of sports, I think of like soccer and basketball, but they think of it holistically. So it's everything from baseball and basketball to equine fields. Um, so, uh, I know we're working hard to kind of help the horse park develop and that might be an avenue for them to gain more funding. So we're gonna keep an eye on those two bills and hope that, uh, they get through there. Um, finally, the National Tunnel Pool. Um, that is a big, um, a big thing in our community, especially down Duffield Way, right? We wanna get that back open. Uh, you know, it's a government project, so it's gonna take some time. Uh, I think I, I was hoping last year that it was gonna be up and running by this year. Um, I'm still learning that, uh, government takes time to work, uh, so it's looking like that is gonna be in twenty twenty six. Uh, we also stopped by VDOT, um, as they were just here. We talked about, uh, dirt roads and the thing on dirt roads is they can't do anything unless the General Assembly gives them more funding. And they're probably not likely to give them more funding for that. Um, we do have the revenue sharing opportunities, uh, to help build out those roads. Um, so it's something we should think about if we can start to build up some industry and get some extra tax income in here and that we might, might put some money towards that, but that's really gonna require a lot of extra money on our part. Uh, if you'll remember back, uh, I think it was like a hundred thousand dollars to pave a quarter mile of road or something like that. So it's a, it's a lot of money and there, we would be responsible for part of that. So we really need to work on everything we can do to attract businesses, to get that income up, so that can give us better roads. Um, funding for safety, there's the Ready, Set, Go, Smart Scale, all that, uh, stuff is, uh, we're all very familiar with it. We're putting in applications, smart scale projects all the time. Uh, Ready, Set, Go was something that was new to me, so I'm, I'm looking into that a little bit more to see any funded opportunities we can get there. Um, I'm, as I told Mr. Sumter, I proposed some sidewalks in Duffield. Um, if y'all ever go down that way and go to the nursing home, uh, if you look right on the right side, that's not just a strip where grass isn't growing, that's a strip where people are walking enough to kill the grass. So, um, drive out there sometime and look at it. It is, it is a well-traveled piece of land. Uh, Virginia Economic Development Partnership. Uh, you know, they are here to help us build out our county and help us attract and retain business and industry. Um, the governor had an initiative called Accelerate Southwest Virginia that started last year. We're starting to see some of the, uh, fruits of that. Uh, VFP has brought on fifteen new jobs, uh, then the location of RAP Technologies within our RIFA. Um, you know, although that project in particular is not in Scott County, we do get money off of that project because we're a part of that, Lonesome Pond Riffing Loop. Um, the other thing they mentioned, and this was a thread that I heard everywhere, is data centers. Um, there is a lot of money out there right now for data centers. Um, if you look at federal money that they're gonna spend, they plan on spending five hundred billion dollars. That's with a B, five hundred billion dollars on building out our AI capabilities with another potential five hundred billion, again with a B, uh, of funding to further that. So it's a one trillion dollar initiative, uh, to kind of, uh, start this, uh, AI arms race, is what I would call it. Uh, you saw Deep Seek, uh, well, if you pay attention to the news, you saw Deep Seek, our one, uh, came out, uh, the other day. Uh, and that is, was China's, uh, kind of Sputnik moment for us, I would say. Right? It's really gonna, it's, it's shook the market for sure, but it's also gonna shake us into starting to allocate, uh, capital towards that and really seeing if we can be the first to get to something like AGI. I still think AGI is a long ways away, but these data centers will be a great funding opportunity for our county. Um, you know, a single data center, uh, singer, single hyperscale data center, uh, could be enough revenue to fund the whole county. It's, uh, it's pretty amazing. So something about, something we should pursue. Um, then we went to Davenport. You know, Davenport is the, uh, is the certified fiduciary financial consultant, right? So they bring extensive knowledge. Uh, how many counties do they work with, Frida?
I'm not sure. There's a lot.
There's a lot, yeah. Uh, we were talking to one gentleman and he was even working down in Tennessee with other counties and they work in Virginia and Tennessee and I'm sure West Virginia, I heard.
North Carolina.
North Carolina, all over the place. So they, they kind of understand what's going on. Um, I talked to him about the courthouse financing because I know that's something that's been on all of our minds, right? Uh, how are we gonna pay for this? Um, but not only that, it's how, how does the interest work and how, how are we gonna finance that? Um, and, you know, talking to them, they had a really good point. With our funds invested in, uh, LGIP, we're getting a four percent interest rate. Um, with the work that Frida's done to improve the credit rating of the county, we will probably get an interest rate on financing construction that's three percent or lower, probably. Um, so, uh, that difference there, uh, basically we could pay the interest on this with, with that difference, so. It's just something to think about, uh, as we talk about how this construction is gonna go forward. So it's just something to think about, uh, as we talk about how this construction is going to go forward. Um, you know, it is a need for our county and I understand it is a lot of money, but we do have methods and we have had people working on the finances to set us up in, in the right direction. So thank you Frida for that. Um, one, one thing, um, that's going to come up again this year, that came up last year, is there's a one percent sales tax referendum where that we could, uh, have a referendum to have an additional one percent sales tax on everything sold in the county. And that, those funds would be locked up and only available for school maintenance and construction. Um, this would be a great way to finance some of our, uh, school issues, uh, that we're having. You know, some of our schools are very old, some of them built fifties, uh, maybe fifties or sixties, yeah. Um, so they're, they're, they're pretty old and they're, they're going to need some either work or construction here soon. So it's just something to think about. Uh, you know, a referendum puts it in the hands of the people of the county, so they would be the ultimate deciders. Um, so, eh, I don't, from my point of view, I don't see any problem letting them, um, decide on, on that. So if it comes up, if we're allowed to, I'd, I'd love to have the board's support on, on passing that on our part and let the county residents do, you know, vote yay or nay on it to fund the schools. And that way, eh, everybody has a voice in it and everybody feels like they got a voice in the race. Uh, so this is a, this was a pretty cool meeting. Um, I really enjoyed this, everybody from the Lonesome Pond Rifa. Uh, kind of got some face time with Governor Yonkin. Um, that was fantastic. He's reinforced his commitment to Southwest Virginia. You can see me all the way over on the left-hand side there. I'm kind of trying to lean back out of it. Um, but you can see Frida and John Kilgore a, a little bit closer. Um, but yeah, we're, uh, he's kind of reaffirmed his commitment to Southwest Virginia, saying that there is opportunities to be had in Southwest Virginia and he's pushing for those every way that he knows how. He said for us, whatever opportunities we can bring him within these last, uh, few months of his term, he'd be grateful for it. So, I mean, it's, the onus is on us at this point, right? Um, we have to go out and get the opportunities and bring them and see what we can do, uh, from that level. So I really appreciate his commitment and his candor, uh, towards us in that meeting. We're not seeing it everybody. So connecting themes, uh, throughout all of our visits, you know, um, infrastructure and development. Uh, you know, we have already invested in broadband, but investing in housing, transportation and, and tourism to really ex, uh, continue to grow the county. Um, I don't know if you know this, but Scott County is the fifteenth largest, uh, county in Virginia. There is enough room for everything here. There's enough room for industry and tourism and everything in between. So we need to push on all those level, levers to make this county grow. Um, there are funding, uh, and grants out there for us everywhere. Um, we just have to go out and pick them up and, and find the ones that, you know, we are a good fit for. I'm not saying, uh, we should go home right now and, and start filling out a thousand grants, right? But there are some that we are good fits for, that we are planning on, uh, applying for and, um, going towards the future. And so the other thing is, um, strategic planning and policy, right? Oh, with trying to attract industry and business, we need to see what we can do to step in and get out of business's way and let business happen in Scott County as, as much as possible. And as board supervisors, you know, there's a, there's a little bit we can do for that and we can kind of work with some, uh, consultants, um, that are paid for by the state, uh, to kind of develop a plan for housing and, uh, workforce development. So I think that is a great opportunity for us. So going into opportunities and action items. Um, last year we didn't really have anything when we came back and I want to make sure that I came back with a list of things to do, um, because I work better when I have things to do. Um, so number one thing for us is develop the workforce, you know, continue local, uh, to support of local education opportunities for trades and STEM degrees. We're going to need them. Um, you know, one trillion dollars in, uh, AI funded, but also we're looking at reshoring a lot of our manufacturing. So that is going to be a boon to Scott County. I've been saying that for years. You can see it's coming. Um, so that's something we need to work on. Um, support the development of services that a modern workplace expects, right? Um, you can't go anywhere without finding childcare, uh, within any city of any size. And, uh, it really hurts my heart that Scott County is the size that it is and we are unable, uh, to keep, uh, to attract and keep, uh, childcare for our citizens. So, uh, just whatever we can do to support that, there will be some things later, uh, this year. Um, the other thing is we want to increase the housing supply in Scott County. Um, so I'm proposing that the, uh, Planning Commission, the EDA and the Board of Supervisors per pass a resolution supporting the development and construction of additional housing supply in Scott County. I've already sent this, uh, uh, resolution to the, uh, EDA. And they are taking a look at it and I think they'll take it up on their next meeting. I plan on going to the Planning Commission as well and sending that same resolution to them. Basically, it just says that we all do better when there's more people here and that we can, our community can hold more people. You know, if you look at it back in the seventies, Mr. Castile has said this a lot, there were thirty thousand people here. Now it's getting close to being under twenty thousand, right? We're built to handle thirty thousand people. Uh, you, eh, you wouldn't notice a difference, really. Um, so that's just something to, to think about. I want the Planning Commission and the EDA to pass those resolutions first and then the Board of Supervisors do, do ours at, uh, the end. That way we can say to anyone that wants to build a house or build a development in Scott County, that we are here to support you and we will do whatever we can to get this built. Um, the third thing is we want to attract some data centers to, uh, Scott County. It's a great funding opportunity and we already have a lot of industrial space, a lot of commercial space where one could go. Um, we were told that, you know, a lot of them are looking like for a forty acre plot, uh, with power and fiber. Um, we have a lot of acreage in Duffield that we can use. So it's something that, uh, uh, I would like to push. So one thing that I asked Sally about, uh, on her way in, she's probably very annoyed with how much I texted her while I was up there about this, is that, um, I want her to review the zoning for data centers in Scott County and allow them by ride in industrial spaces, uh, and probably commercial spaces as well. Um, and I would like to get the board's consensus on that so Sally can start looking and, and seeing what we can do there. Um, a data center, you know, while big and, and imposing building is not going to take any of our public services like fire, EMS, all that kind of stuff. They don't, you know, if they've got twenty-five, thirty people working there, they're not, it's not going to be a dent in anything else that we're doing. Um, they don't require roads, they don't have eighteen-wheelers rolling in here. Um, so it's, uh, it's basically a building to house data. Um, so, uh, I, uh, or, or GQs, uh, whichever. But anyways, um, so, uh, also, a, a, as we review our zoning around data centers, I'd like to, uh, for the board in conjunction with the EDA, pass a resolution supporting data centers, uh, that just tells the data centers, the folks that, opportunities that we can find that, hey, this county's ready, that this county has things in place and we can basically have a shovel-ready project. Uh, you know, and some of it, not even shovel, shovel-ready, right? You could lay a pad on some of the flat ground we've got ready for this and it'd be good. So just something to think about. Uh, I'd like to send a letter of support for HB and one nine zero one and SB nine two seven. Those are the Sports Tourism Funds. I think those two, um, bills show a lot of promise and I could, uh, get the exact wording for that on, for you all and send that out. I should have had a, a packet, but that's my bad. Um, and then, excuse me, uh, I want to support the usage of bead money for wireless buildout. Um, I talked to Dr. Tamara Holmes while we were up there and, uh, she basically said, uh, or, and I emailed her afterwards, and she said, you know, a letter of support would be great, but we don't need it right at this time. So I told her to let us know, uh, when she would need a letter, a letter of support and, uh, we would be glad to support, uh, this initiative for using that bead money for wireless buildout. I think Scott County, we were looking at a coverage map and we have a lot of places that are poorly covered. Um, not only Nicholsville and Gannon, but we also have, uh, Fairview and on in the Lee County over in, in that way. So, you know, pretty much as, as soon as you turn off the twenty-three, it's dead, right? Uh, in, in a lot of places. Um, that, that's how it is. It used to be in Fairview though, until its past year. So that was, uh, that's kind of the action items. Uh, does anyone have any issues with any of those action items? Can Sally go ahead and start reviewing zoning ordinances for those? And I want to get, you know, data centers as, get her recommendations as what we can do to allow data centers as close to by ride as we can in industrial and commercial zones.
Sounds great. I appreciate that.
Everybody else? Yeah, yeah, alright. I'll, I'll count that as consensus and I got a lot of head shaking. Um, alright, that, um, I will prepare us a letter of support for HB one nine zero one and SB nine two seven. And, uh, probably next meeting, we'll have a, uh, resolution for housing and data centers prepared and I'll send that out to you all beforehand. Um, and I think that's all I got, yeah. Um, you know, thank y'all for supporting everything and, and all the county workers for what they do. They make this thing go around. Us as supervisors, we just come here and, and, you know, say yes or no. And, but at the end of the day, they're the ones out here pursuing all these opportunities and I really appreciate that. So, thank you all.
I did have a question for you.
Yeah?
When you met with VDOT, uh, did you discuss the Weber City property?
We did. Uh, I, I totally forgot about that. Um, they are processing that request for half of it. Um, but they're running into some issues about right-of-way, if I remember correctly. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, cause our formal request was where the former solid waste site was, not the whole property.
Yeah.
And they're working on the right-of-way stuff because they still have a soft facility there. They're looking to move, but at this point it's not moved yet, so.
Yeah, and also those buildings have lead and asbestos in them. And so they were going to have a headache trying to push them over onto us. So we only want the plant that doesn't have any buildings on it or has as few buildings as possible on it, right?
And taking that piece out should make it hopefully somewhat faster process.
Yes, exactly. So we'll keep pursuing that with them. That, that's a good one, Mr. Schenk, that I, I didn't think to put in our presentation here. Any other questions? Any concerns? I have to say we're, we're well-supported by our delegate and, and Senator, they're, they're doing their job up there. Uh, so, appreciate it. Alright, that's it. Ah, bookkeeping items, what have we got?
Sorry, I've got a big sheet today.
I, I saw it.
Please appropriate forty-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and fifty cents to Circuit Court Clerks IT Technology Fund, office equipment additions, fourteen, zero, five, two, one, nine, three, zero. I can't see the, four, zero, eight, two, zero, three? For monies received deposit treasuries office. Appropriate three hundred and fifty dollars to board and conferences training. One thousand dash one, one, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, five, five, four, zero for reimbursements received. Appropriate one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents to clerk of Circuit Court Conferences and Training, one thousand dash two, one, seven, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, five, five, four, zero for reimbursements received. Appropriate one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for repair and maintenance of vehicles, one thousand dash three, one, two, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, six, zero, zero, nine for insurance claims. And appropriate one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, sixty-nine cents Commonwealth's Attorneys Conferences and Training, one thousand dash two, two, one, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, five, five, four, zero for a reimbursement receipt.
Do we have a motion to, uh, pay the bills? Oh, sorry.
Appropriation.
Appropriation, that's my bad. Wrong room. Alright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright.
Who are we going with?
We're going with Danny.
Danny.
Yeah, yeah. Alright. Okay, um, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry. I will get use of that eventually. Um, anything else on the bookkeeping?
Uh, I've got grants to draft too. Please accept Sheriff's Office DCJS Operation Ceasefire Continuation two, zero, two, five, dash, OCGF grant award totaling one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars to the already established budget code, one thousand, dash, three, one, two, nine, zero. And accept Sheriff's Office DMV Alcohol Project Number ENFAL two, zero, two, five, 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 zero, nine, six, two, five, zero, nine, five. Grant award totaling twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars to the already established budget code, one thousand, dash, three, one, two, six, five. And accept Sheriff's Office D, DMV Selective Enforcement Police Traffic Services Project Number, BPT two, zero, two, five, 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 one, five, four, dash, two, five, one, five, four. Grant award, award totaling fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to the already established budget code, one thousand, dash, three, one, two, six, eight. And accept litter controls, Virginia DEQ Litter Prevention and Recycling Program and the EPS Campaign FY twenty-five Grant Award totaling twenty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents. And if accepted, please establish expense code for litter control miscellaneous grant expenses, one thousand, dash, three, five, eight, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, five, eight, six, three, dash, zero, one, four, zero, zero. And appropriate nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents. And accept litter controls, Virginia DEQ FY twenty-five Competitive Litter Prevention and Recycling Grant Award totaling one thousand dollars. And if accepted, please appropriate one thousand dollars to the already established budget code expense code for litter control grant supplies, one thousand, dash, three, five, eight, zero, zero, dash, four, zero, six, zero, one, zero. It's all the grants.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept these grants and establish these expense codes?
Slow movement, Mr. Chen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Everyone vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that all we've got?
Yes.
Okay. I thought there might be another page.
Thankfully not.
Okay, great. On to appointments then. Um, how many appointments, or how many positions are open?
You have five, let's say you wanted six to fill.
Okay.
Um, the first one is the Housing Authority. Um, you have, um, one opening and this one was carried over from the January meeting. It was re-advertised and there's still no applicants.
Alright, well, I'll have to see what I can find for that one. What's the next one we've got?
The CPMT position is for a parent of a school-aged child. Um, you did not receive any applicants and the person serving in this did not reapply.
I have a person coming to sit in on those meetings and see if that's something that she wants to be a part of. So, um, we are working down, uh, an avenue for that.
Okay, for the Courthouse Facilities Committee, Lisa McCarty's been serving and she did reapply and she is your only applicant.
I'll nominate Lisa McCarty.
I'll second the motion. No, 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 no. I vote that, make the motion that nomination cease and we vote by affirmation.
I'm all in favor. Let me get this.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay, uh, everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Who was the second?
Mine.
Thank you.
Um, next is the Crooked Road Board?
Yes, John Kilgore has been serving and he did reapply and he is your only applicant.
Okay.
I'll nominate John Kilgore for the position.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we-
I'll make a motion. We, uh, nomination ceases and we vote by affirmation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright. Everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
You have one opening on the Planning Commission. Charles Bullock has been serving. He did reapply. You also have applications from Steve Pike and Shannon Stewart.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Shannon Stewart for that position. I've known Shannon for a year. She's overeducated and overqualified. He'd make a great one.
I'll vote, or I'll nominate.
Uh, I would like to nominate Steve Pike.
Okay.
Steve's currently in Richmond. He's been up there several weeks. You may have run into him. He's with Spirit Trails.
Okay.
He's had experience there at Capital Grounds and construction and permitting. And, uh, he's wanting to do some things in Scott County and it looks like he's getting some things done.
Alright, how do we approach this now that we have two nom- or, sorry, is there any other nominations?
I'll make the motion nomination cease. No, we don't do that.
No.
Our all votes for Mr. Stewart.
Okay, can we do a roll call vote on this, just so it's nice and clear for everyone?
Sure.
Okay, voting for Shannon Stewart. Darrell, okay. I'll read your name and you tell me who you're voting for. Shannon Stewart or Steve Pike?
Pike.
Michelle?
Mr. Pike.
Eddie?
Mr. Pike.
Mr. Bricky?
Stewart.
Mr. Castile?
Mr. Pike.
Mr. Manus?
Stewart.
And Ms. Addington?
Mr. Stewart.
Okay, so Mr. Pike has four votes and Mr. Stewart has three. Okay.
And you also need to appoint Chris Manus as the chief local elected official since he's your chairman.
I'll nominate Mr. Manus to the CLEO Board.
Well, I'm, I'll make a motion nomination cease and we vote by affirmation.
Snaker.
Alright, everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, moving on to County Attorney's Board.
You all have my report on your tablets. I hope to answer any questions, but I don't have anything to add.
Thank you for all you do, Sally.
Yeah? Appreciate you looking into these, uh, zoning ordinances this month too. That's gonna be a big help for us. Any other questions? Comments? County Administrator's Report?
You have your financial report and green sheet in your folders. The general fund balance after bills is nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Nineteen million two hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Um, if you look at your comparison report, we are quite a bit ahead of where we were last year. Uh, don't get too excited because we still owe the school system a little over ten million dollars for this, um, fiscal year. So, moving on to the claims, early set totaled six hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total claims for the month is one million four hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. Um, of course, the, the big one this month was the regional jail quarterly payment, which was five hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. You do have a list of all your claims that's over five thousand dollars. If you want to look over those and see if you have any questions about any of those, I can give you some more detail.
So, we still owe the school ten mil?
A little over ten million.
How do they get by till now? They're not drawn?
They have, uh, they're virtual academy and they, since they've been having that, they use that money instead of drawing down county money until the end.
Well, that's good. We draw in.
So, any questions on any of the over five thousand?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Everybody vote by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Comments, requests, uh? Oh.
Try to have any missed ones.
Don't have any missed ones?
Since you don't have anything else, I did have a couple of questions. Speaking of the school system, the hundred, I think it was a hundred and seventy thousand, they agreed to pay for accounting services in the trash. That, while they fulfill that commitment.
Yes, I did bill them last fiscal year for that last six months and they did pay that.
Okay.
So, we were doing that every six months. It's not been seen this time.
The other thing regarding, they agreed to do, uh, county maintenance on some of the vehicles.
They have been doing that, yes.
Uh, Scott Services. What is their current, do you have any idea what their current fund balance is? I didn't know what, where that was located.
Three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
It's grown about eighty thousand this year. Thank you. Well, one other thing. I looked at your blue budget sheet forecast versus current. Uh, I think it's worth pointing out that, uh, our county treasurer, I think right now is, I think the item, the best I could tell was three hundred thousand in interest. Is that correct? And forecast is two hundred. So, and we're only halfway through the year.
All of our interest together has been about eight hundred thousand since he has been in office.
That's fantastic.
One year, in office.
That makes a real difference when county hours adds.
'Cause we're also, we're getting interest on our checking account and we're also getting LGIP interest. So, both of those are, uh, adding up substantially.
That's fantastic, yeah. The budget's looking really good for where we're at in the year.
Considering where you adopted the budget at, um, I think you will come out pretty well this year without having to take all that money from reserves that you had budgeted. Because of the extra interest and the collections on the tax rates are pretty well i- in the ninety, high nineties. So, um, there's still money on the table to be collected that would not reach that budget point yet, but collections have been going well based on looking at the reports.
Yeah, and we only budget for, what, ninety-five percent collection rate?
Yeah, I get the revenue forecast from the commissioner. Uh, I know we don't collect a hundred percent, so I usually back that off because if you're, you know, five percent's a lot of hundreds of thousands. So, if you don't collect that, you're already knowing off the top that you're gonna be in a deficit. So, I always back that projection down and if you meet it or exceed it, then that's better for the general fund. Um, but you've got to be conservative in your estimates on your revenue side or you can get in a, in a bind.
We'll probably have to pay a little to the jail this time.
I'm afraid our jail bill is gonna be a big hit for next budget year. Uh, our inmate count is up quite a bit. Um, plus we have some additional expenses, um, jail authority region-wide, um, that have hit this year that we will have to pick up on the local level. Um, we'll probably have our first draft, um, February nineteenth is the regional jail meeting. I'm unable to attend because of a personal issue. Um, but Mr. Jeter will be there and of course I'll get the packet by email. So, we'll know more about it at the March meeting on how the regional jail is gonna shake out for this year. 'Cause we'll have next year's estimate, plus we'll have what our projection is that we'll owe in addition to the budget next year. You know, we're used to getting, it's a cycle. It's up and down. We're used to getting money back, usually a couple hundred thousand. Uh, but this, it's, it's hitting us this time. We'll have to make up the difference next time. 'Cause they do go out to a zero balance and you either get money back or you pay. And it is, everybody goes through that cycle.
Alright, a supervisor comments?
I'd like to thank staff for all the work they do and all the people on the board for the work they do. It's a thankless job.
Apparently. Anybody else?
I did have, but we've, uh, basically already covered several items on VDOT, so I'll, I'll pass on that. Uh, meetings attended this month. I wanted to, I did go to Pivot Energy, um, Community Meeting in Nicholsville. And I just wanted to mention that they will be having another meeting in February. Apparently they didn't advertise the first meeting.
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. It'll be at Key Park, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that, that is another meeting.
I'd encourage any supervisors who have it, went to that meeting to go.
Uh, attended a Lenoysco meeting with Nicholsville Mayor Danny Dixon and former mayor Becky Bryant. Were called for, called for projects. A couple of items, you mentioned sidewalks. That's one of the items that they were interested in. And also, uh, generators, mobile generators. Ms. Starnes, uh, set up a meeting with, uh, Dr. Greer with Mountain Empire. And, uh, we've discussed that today, but, uh, we've got meetings this coming week and the next week. Larry Vickers will be assisting. They will be meeting with their, uh, Mountain Empire advisors that work with the high school students. And our goal is to get more participation with the parents. We feel like that's something that needs some work, so we'll be seeing how we can, uh, work on that. Tomorrow, actually, uh, I'll be attending a meeting with the Scott County Fire Department's, uh, joint meeting and, uh, the PSA staff. And we'll be discussing improved communications on the, between the two departments in regards to fire hydrants. Central Scott County Water Project, that's, uh, Big Moccasin in Nicholsville, has been approved and advertised through, I think this week for beds. Uh, Hume and Hilton's already been announced. Those two projects are being advertised. Uh, the Virginia Mobile Loan Office has relocated to the Weber City Food City parking lot. It's the old Food City. His next date is February the nineteenth. Uh, we attended a Lenoysco meeting, uh, this week. Mr. Manus down near area. ARC potential project applications, the Fairview Flower Gap Water Project. And that's a Lee County project primarily.
Yep.
But, uh, it will include-
Will that take in Scott County too?
It'll be some of the Scotts. Not that many, but it's a one point five million, but they're just now starting the process, application process.
Yeah, and do you have any additional information on that? I haven't heard from Lee County TSA, like how much of that area is they're planning on co- covering? Are they planning on connecting Fairview Road completely to our system or?
Twenty-four houses.
Twenty-four houses type, or potential.
In Scott County?
No, there would be both sides.
I think there's just about three in Scott County.
Yep.
Just about three. I'd like to see a map of where they're going.
Since you brought up the, uh, data centers, uh, Lenoysco this week. None of the seven sites in Lenoysco study for small modular reactors is being considered for development. However, a feasibility study was approved for a micro reactor for Wise County. And they can be utilized for criti- critical infrastructure such as hospitals and water treatment facilities, also data centers. I think the data centers are now building their own units, they're following a micro unit.
Well, there, there are some, um, data centers that are building that. There are some data centers that are working on solar. There are some data centers that are working on gas peaker plants as well. So, it's a combination of all of the above. Uh, and tha- that's a great point, like Scott County needs to adopt a strategy of all of the above for energy and really mean all of the above. If we had thirty megawatts extra in our grid here, we wouldn't have no problems attracting a data center. Or we wouldn't even have to fuss with AEP about that. So, you know, that's something, that's something we need to consider when these, uh, solar projects come up. Because every megawatt counts as far as I'm concerned. Sorry, continue.
This, I think this has already been in the media, but, you know, some people watching might not have gotten it. Regarding, uh, cell service equipment upgrades broadband. There's four hundred and five thousand dollar loan and four hundred and five thousand dollar match to Lenoysco from Scott County Telephone and Verizon awarded to Scott County to help upgrade field service equipment. Uh, Dungannon Waterline Replacement, uh, continues and that may be finished by now. Uh, Upper Cliff Mountain Phase Two Water Project, four hundred and forty thousand, second round funding to follow the Black Gun Project. Apka, uh, down in Daniel Boone area, they're now doing tax returns. And I think qualifier there, if you're under sixty-four thousand dollars, they can help with your tax returns.
Can you go back to that Upper Cliff Mountain? Where are they with that project? Because I've talked to a couple of the residents. Have you, do you know anything about that Upper Cliff Mountain Phase Two?
I don't recall.
I can answer that. The weather held up AEP connecting the power because of the hurricane. They had to pull off. But they are back on that, so it should be operational soon.
Some, some of those folks reached out to me and asked.
I think that's all they like to do is pair.
Yeah, but the hurricane got AEP off that project, so they are working back on it now.
Thank you.
Uh, Apka Daniel Boone Office is open, uh, for tax returns now. And they're gonna be opening an office in Dungannon to help people with tax returns if you make less than, I think it's sixty-four thousand. That's all I have.
I have a cou- I have a couple things.
Okay.
Sorry, I did, I was just waiting to see if anybody else was gonna say anything. Um, on Monday, the tenth of February, at Clinch River Health Services, there is the Mobile Memogram Unit, um, valid. Will be on site to provide mammograms to anybody who shows up. Um, if you have insurance, that your insurance will just be billed, but if you do not have insurance, you do not receive a bill from, from them for that service. So, I would encourage, uh, any body, doesn't have, necessarily have to be male or female, either way, uh, to go if you're, if you need the mammogram to do that.
What time?
Uh, I would say all day. I would say probably by eight-thirty in the morning. I know it, they, they usually stay all day, so. And I would encourage anybody, because everybody that I've talked to that's gone to that, they've never received a bill and it's a good, it's a good opportunity for that.
What's their in and out time? Could someone do it during lunch? Is that?
I would say so. I would say so. You give, I'm, I can give you all the number to the clinic, um, and they're, they can probably give more information. It's four six seven two two oh one. It gets you the clinic's main line. And they can probably, um, give more information on how fast that, you know, if you need to schedule. I don't think you can schedule it, or you might be able to schedule it. I just know it's gonna be there and I wanted to pass that along because that's, it's very important, I think. And speaking of the budget, I just want to go back to, um, last year really quick. Um, and as we all know how the misinformation got put in the paper. And just request that let's work together as a group, as Chris and I are on this budget committee, to put, to not put out any kind of false information for the public to, um, missing, you know, just to get the public wrong, because last year could have been completely avoided. And I think we all agree with that. And-
I'd like to remind you, Ms. Addington, all references made to adjustments in the tax rate refer to real estate tax. All communications I received, there was nothing else identified other than real estate taxes.
But I've got it right here where you took out, I've got the, what I'm talking about is the ad you took out into the paper.
You said I misrepresented it.
Yeah, you misre- it's misrepresented.
It was exactly what we discussed in our budget committee.
No.
I can go back and give you the emails.
You can go back and do whatever you feel like you need to do to try to justify your actions, but in my opinion, and I think everybody here on this board agrees, that right there was misinformation. And it was conveyed to the public to create the atmosphere that it- And it was conveyed to the public to create the atmosphere that it created. I just wanna, I just wanna say that, you know, this year, I hope that you'll have more respect for this board. And more integrity on this board than to do something like that, to put us in the shape and form we did last year. I just hope-
I think we had a, a good response from the public, and I think that's our responsibility, is to inform the public.
We did have, I will grant, I will grant you that, we did have a response from the, from the public. But if you felt like that was a good response, okay.
So you preferred no one showed up, is that?
I prefer no one show up on the court that they've been lied to, if that's what you want me to just come out and say.
Ms. Stornes, I'll ask you a question. In our communication regarding the tax increases, what effect the budget would have, up or down? I think all the references that we, you and I have discussed, referred to real estate tax.
Okay, I'll explain this process. Um, the budget committee gets the budget at your worst case scenario. That's everybody's request that they had, that's what we worked through for a month. And was that, if you were gonna fund everything everybody asked for, it would have took that much of an increase. But you need to work on this board as a group then to take things off the budget that you cannot fund. That, I agree that should have never been advertised at as twenty-three percent increase. That was not realistic, because this board had not took a look at that whole budget yet and made their changes. And we're still dealing with those repercussions nine, ten months later.
So I want to actually make a formal censure of that for the record.
Is there a second on that?
Well, you said nine, ten months later, the thing she's got here is Monday, May the sixth. Is, uh, is that right where I was reading that, was reading that myself?
That was when we met, he, he, this was in the paper.
Right, if the-
And this was our meeting.
Tax proposal was twenty-three percent.
There was no proposal on any level, form, fashion. So I'd like to formally make the request that we censure Mr. Skeens for his actions during the last budget year for communication of that false information.
I think the process, the twenty-three, I don't, did we start at twenty-three?
That's what you put in the paper?
No.
I mean, I can actually-
I think when we first started, is actually, if you'd gone with all the capital projects, it would've been much greater than that. As we worked through the process, I think we were ending up at that twenty-three percent level.
No, to bring it to the full board, we were at that level.
Yeah, it's almost the same.
The full board has a month that they work on the budget too and bring those down in open session for everybody to come and listen.
That's the whole reason I appointed myself to the budget committee this year is because last year I spent that whole month coming through that budget. Multiple meetings with Frida, and I felt like I did your all's work for you, just tapping it out there.
Well, you should've been on the budget committee if you want, we're spending that much time with.
Yeah, and that's why I'm doing it this year.
I made it last year.
That was afterwards, that was after the budget committee.
Uh, the censure, can you explain that?
It's just a formal, I can read the legal definition if you'd like. Censure is a form, let's see, let me look it up. Hey Sally, do you know if there's a, a, uh, it's in, let's see. There's a couple of different definitions that I will. Is a typically done through a structured process, a vote within an organization or governing body where the majority decision is needed to officially censure someone. A censure often involves a public statement outlining the reasons for disapproval, making it a form.
Ms. Kegl, is there anything else that needs to be added to that?
I don't have an opinion, um, this is new information to me right now and I don't have anything to add.
Can we just agree just to work together, do we have to do this right here?
No, we don't have to do, that's fair.
I, I would rather just work together as a team.
That's what I want to do, that was the purpose for this.
And, and not even worry about the past, worry about now and the future. I, I mean, today's meeting has just been unreal.
And it's not over yet.
And it's not over. It bothers me so bad that all these accurizations that have come forward to us today. The time frame, the nine AM. I understand that it's an issue with people who work. We all work, we've all gotta pay our bills. But we tried the six PM thing and no one showed up. And it was so hard for people who did come and spoke in front of us to talk to us. And they couldn't even get their words out. Because they were so exhausted and so tired because they were waiting for their terms. I mean, and, and then, salary wise, I, I get you, I get you, I do. But, you know, I mean, it was listed, I've got a twenty-twenty-two copy of the salaries. And it plainly says that you were assistant, then. You know, this woman works hard, she works hard, she knows these numbers backwards and forwards. And it just bothers me that everybody just keeps coming on her and, and, and bill, and they all work together. I'm on the waste committee, and we brought in Frida to help us. And these two work great together, I've learned that in this past year that we've worked together on this committee. And it, it just, it just blows my mind that we all can't just work together as one unit for these people.
Do I-
You know, I, I, I've spoken, I've got an open door policy, I know everybody else here does. If, if you've got problems, if you've got issues, if you've got concerns, you can't get ahold of Daryl, call me. If you can't get ahold of Eddie, call me. Let us help you, and that's why we chose to run for the positions that we are in, because we want to help the county.
Yes, yes.
I, I agree, so let's just all agree that this year we go through the process like it has been done in the past. And no formal censure or anything like that, but listen, we're working together for this county. I'm here, I'm here because I love this county.
I think, I think that's, I think that's the best thing. We all love the county, we all love the people, that's why we're in the positions that we are in. And we all need to work together to help this county and help these people. You know, uh, it was, I've gone to an EDA meeting this past month. And there were maybe four people there at that meeting, and you know they've got a public comment section. You know, if you've got issues with Riverside, or you know, why is there nothing there at Riverside? What, what are we doing with Teledex? You know, come to these meetings and stand in front of those folks and ask them, you know, what, what's going on? What, you all have a voice and you need to speak. And coming to the meetings, you know, helps you speak out and ask these questions. But if you can't come to the meetings, especially this one, that's why we're here. That's why we're here, we're here, we're your voice. So that's why today, when VDOT was here, I made the comments, uh, you know, about Mr. Hobbs calling me and Mr. Kessler calling me last night. And, and people calling me, you know, throughout the months. Um, I always ask, I will find out, if I don't know the answer, I will find that answer out for you. And, and everybody else on this board will do the same thing. Um, but, you know, like I said, I, I understand the nine AM is a problem for everybody. But please do not hesitate to call one of us or email us or message us and say, hey, I've got this problem, or hey, I've got this issue. And let us find out the answers for you, because that's why we're here. That is why we're here, is to help you all. And I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I had to get that out, I had to get that out of my chest, because it's been bothering me the whole time.
That's all right, uh, sorry, we've gotta go into closed session now, uh, for one item.
I've got one thing to say before.
Okay, sorry.
I've been here a long time, longer than anybody. And the first meeting I come to, I was gonna satisfy everybody. I went out of that meeting and I said, this ain't working, I'm gonna do what I think's right for the county. And they can growl or fuss, and I've seen the room filled a dozen times. You're gonna have them people, no matter what you do, you're gonna have them come in and fuss, just like today. But do what's right for the county and forget about it. Go home with clear conscience, if you're doing what's right, and don't worry about it.
During the year last year while I was chairman, after we had this uproar over what was in the paper. I mentioned, uh, censorship, censor, and I also mentioned non-disclosure agreements. The EDA signs non-disclosure agreements where they cannot come out of, of their off, their meetings.
Their public sessions.
And, and give stuff to the public. We had stuff to come out of our executive session in the public, where we need non-disclosure agreements. Chris and, and I looked at some stuff that Sally came up with for censor, censorship, censor people. And we didn't put it in the handbook, because we thought it would upset everybody during the last year. But we were gonna look at it again this year, we've already approved our handbook again, and it's still not in there. But, uh, I think I was told when we approved it that censor, being, being able to censure somebody. Or to do a non-disclosure agreement would be discussed later. So maybe we can do that, to be added to our conduct.
Since you brought that, uh, things coming out of closed session, I think that's referring to me. And I was contacted following a Republican Party meeting by some of the attendees. Uh, asking me about the Riverside property. And they were giving me all the information that we heard in closed session. So I was, you know, later on, I did respond. But that was discussed in an open public meeting at the Republican Party meeting, I think Ms. Addington was there. And I think, you can't remember if you discussed it or not, I think it's your response, uh.
That's a private matter to my, for myself.
Well, let's hold on just a second here, we were sworn to secrecy, however, they got that was not.
Right.
And that came out in, in the public that way. But I think the, the problem where we had was, is you mentioned that in an open meeting. And that caused some confusion with a lot of folks. And I, you know, I, I understand that it's hard to differentiate between those two. But they're, the things that we say in closed session are not for open session. They're a competitive advantage most of the time for our county.
Were the same rules applied to a Republican Party meeting?
They're not governed by-
With the board, uh, with our board members, they're in closed session.
They're not-
Can they discuss it at a Republican party?
They're not governed by that.
Our members did not discuss it at the-
Well, I was told they did.
No.
You were misinformed, yeah.
I was told Ms. Addington was discussing that at the Republican Party meeting. That she was in-
That's a new one I've seen.
That she was in the part of the discussion in the group that was talking about it.
I'm sure you were.
I'm sure you were.
I'm just, I wasn't there.
Obviously you were.
That's what the people told me, that we were there.
Yeah, okay, but if we start going off of he said, she said, all that kinda stuff, we're gonna end up in a mess. And the, the difference is that you mentioned it during an open session. That is recorded and goes out to the county, that's, that's the difference there. Um, but we're not gonna get anywhere on this discussion right now, we do have one item to go into closed session about. Um, do I have a motion?
Before we go to that, now, you heard, uh, I guess, Ms. Piers, that she wanted that. And I would be the first one to tell you that I voted to change the time from, uh, from six o'clock to nine o'clock in the mornings. And I take a lot of heat for it, and I'll tell, why did they change it? I said, no, they did change it, I voted myself on that. Well, why did you vote? We didn't get, I told them, you people didn't show up. I said, we could not get this no more at six o'clock as we can at nine o'clock in the mornings. I said, first thing is I ain't ready to argue at ten o'clock at night, I'm ready to go to bed to get something to eat. And I get a little juice when they get on to me. I said, I don't have a cook, then I gotta go to Kinksport at eleven o'clock. But I hear that pretty regularly. Now, I don't care to change it back, but I don't want it at six o'clock, because you don't get home in bed to twelve o'clock. But if y'all would wanna change it to four-thirty or something, that we could get home or, or leave it like it is. I'm ready, I, I'm happy either way, that's all I've got to say.
It, it would cost me the same amount of PTO that I'd have to take either way.
Cause I hear that, you know, I'll say two or three times a month, and I've had ever since we've changed it. But, uh, but if y'all got any suggestions or anything that y'all wanna do, I'm willing to list it.
I think the time, the nine AM time is fine.
I-
I, I think the nine AM time is fine, because like I said before, we're their voice. And they can call upon us at any point, any time, email us messages, come by my house, I don't care. But, I mean, and talk to us, because that's why we're sitting here. We were voted in by the people, and that is why we're here today.
Right.
And if they trust us to be in this seat, then they can trust us to get their questions answered. And find out, you know, the, the answers to the issues that they've got. They've gotta trust us, cause they put us here.
Well, like I told them, I've stayed here fifteen minutes to eleven before, back when we had it at six o'clock. I said, y'all leave, then we go back in closed sessions and different things. And I said, y'all get home an hour or so earlier than we do, to hour and a half. And I said, we're still here arguing about different things. And I said, uh, some nights we don't get out here, I said, on a record, it was ten-thirty at night, at that time.
And, and it was rough, cause I worked shift work.
Yeah.
And going home at twelve o'clock, not being able to wind down till one o'clock in the morning, have to get up at four o'clock in the morning to go to work. You know, but I chose that, I, I, I chose this to help the county. And, and I'm not fussing about it, but it was a little rough, working twelve-hour shifts and all that, but, you know, that's, that's me.
Cause one asked me that last week, he is fussing about it. And I said, no, I ain't gonna be no more six o'clock, I can tell you that. I said, I can sleep four o'clock or four-thirty. But I said, no, I don't want no more six o'clock meetings and be there almost five hours.
All right.
That's all.
All right.
Thank you.
One second.
Yeah, we have, we have one item to go into closed session for, A-one personnel being county administrator.